Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the March 12th, 2024 Winchester Planning Board Meeting. If you're watching us, then you already know that we are on camera and we are being taped. If you do not wish to be on tape, I guess you'll have to leave the room if you're here. We are live today. So, we had essentially a single item on our agenda this evening, which is to discuss and finalize the planning board's zoning amendment for compliance with the NVTA, Multifamily, something like that. So, we will be talking in part about various parts of our town zoning, including section three, four, eight, and 10, probably also section nine. So, I don't believe we have any updates today. Shall we dive straight into this?
Yeah.
Dive?
Dive, dive.
Okay, everyone here can swim?
I can briefly say that the CPA is on track to be submitted as well, and my historic section is written and not, I don't think, being changed. So, I was on the historic.
Okay, the CPA, yeah. One thing I want to note for all of those who are not used to microphones is please pull them towards you. Otherwise, they will not get picked up. Thank you. Of course, if you pull them too close, then everything gets rid. So, one of the things, in order to get us to be a little more efficient this evening, what I'd like to do is to ask you if you have any particular areas of concern. And so, those are the ones we want to spend time on versus just some, you know, changing words here or there. So, if we go around, tell me what your areas of concern are, then we can rank them according to how much time it'll take to go through them. And let's... I'll just shout out.
We need to open the meeting, all right? Have we done, do we have...
I don't think I hear you. Open the meeting?
In person, we don't have to...
I'm sorry?
Do we have to open the meeting?
Oh, darn, yes, we do have to open the meeting. Thank you very much. Let's do a...
I couldn't remember what the in-person...
Oh, I don't even know how we do in-person anymore.
Present?
Present.
Present.
Nick Rosetta is present.
Sally Dale is present.
Present.
Carrie Layden is present.
Eaching Scott, present.
And Dea Jerris is mostly present, I think.
Jay is here, yay.
And we have with us at the table Jay Tullerman, Town Council, and Taylor Herman, Town Planner. So, areas of concern. So, I have inclusionary housing, because I think we have to define some things on there. What we do about the difference between open space and open area, because there are two different terms in here. Then, there are also... So, those are two that I brought up. Anyone else has had one?
I think the dimensional requirements, 8.11.4, and site design, 8.11.63.
So, dimensional requirements and site design... Sorry, site...
Site design.
Site review.
But then also, who decides the site plan review? Who's the site plan review authority?
Okay, so we don't...
Okay, that's good.
When you say site design, do you mean site plan?
Site plan.
Okay, so which section is that again?
It says site plan and design review.
It says 8.11.6.3 is site design, period.
8.11.6.3, yeah.
Which is A through J, all the variations on...
Okay, so we're gonna, so let's look at, so it's general development standards?
Well, oh, yes, yes.
So, that's general development standards. Okay, anything else?
Definitions on open space, just to clarify.
Yep, I've got that as mine, open space.
And I still want to put into the table 8.11.3, a row. So, 8.11.3 needs another row.
Okay, is that a typographic thing, or is...
No, it's a table, one, eight, I don't know why it's called Table 1, 8.11, okay, whatever. It doesn't, there was a comment made that you can't tell what the underlying zoning is, and in a, if Taylor scrolls, maybe the comments that I put in didn't get in, I don't know.
Well, let's, so this is a...
Just take that in order, yep.
Yeah, so this is table 8.11.
I'll tell you that it's on page four of the document.
So, it's named 3-8.11?
It's 8.11.3, permitted uses, the following uses are permitted as of right within the NOD, Table 1 hyphen 8.11. I don't know where the table 1...
So, under section 8.11.3, the first table of section 8.11 occurs, and it is called Table 1.
It's called Table 1, okay, so it's table...
Yeah, what she said.
1-8.11.
I just want to add some in front of that, not right now, we'll keep going.
Okay, any other ones?
Oh, maybe I did it in the wrong, yeah, well, maybe not, we'll see.
Okay.
I hope we don't need to have this discussion tonight, but how late can, can we do naming after this push?
Naming?
Naming of the...
No. Districts have to be named.
Yep.
So, we have to just come up with some consensus.
Naming of districts that let us, let us, okay, that's a concern. I'm gonna say it's one of our least...
Yeah, at the bottom, but we do want to be clear, because it's gonna probably roll into...
Oh, it does.
North Maine.
Okay, so why don't we, so what I have is inclusionary housing, open space slash open area, dimensional requirements, general development standards, table 1-8.11, and naming of districts. So, I think that the two big ones there are general development standards, dimensional requirements, then, so we can do general development first, dimensional requirements second, inclusionary housing third. I don't, let's do open space over, and that's, I think, a fairly, well, it could be short or it could be long. Then, five is table, six is naming, and then at the end, I think we are going to go through from start to finish, just to make sure.
All right.
So, let's jump into general development standards. Yicheng, this is yours.
Okay, let's see. So, we're at 8.11.4. Okay, let's see. So, we're at eight point eleven point four. First of all, we have eight point eleven point six point two, site plan review authority. So, right now, as written, it says the site plan review authority within the MOD should be the planning board. And I wanted to have that discussion of whether or not we want it to be the planning board, because,
I'm sorry, eight point eleven point four?
These are a little,
General development standards, are you at general development?
Eleven six.
Eight eleven six.
Yeah, sorry, eight eleven point six point two.
Thank you. Okay, I just got lost.
Okay, eight eleven point six point two.
Yes, I was reading my notes.
Okay.
Okay, so, site plan review authority, who is gonna decide on the final say, just decision for the site plan review authority?
Who does that now, on most of our site plan reviews?
For C, the GBD, it is currently planning board, for GBD two, GBD three, it is ZBA.
It's only CBD for planning board.
CBD, yes.
Everywhere else in town, it's the ZBA.
Right. So, I know that this covers, this, this area covers both the CBD as well as other parts of town, but knowing how much is on the table of a planning board, and how much work it is to get to the final decision, I think that site plan review, I think that planning board could act as an advisory and kind of give this, once it's well-written, have that advisory role and then give it to ZBA, because there are way too many things on the plate, getting, getting,
North Maine?
North Maine, getting, you know, master plan implemented, all those things get really pushed, and we spend too much time doing these kinds of things.
Do we want to also have design review involved, or are they involved anyway?
They're involved anyway, right?
They are an advisory board, so,
Whoever, who, whoever is the authority.
Whoever does site plan review, so. I mean, it's the, whichever one is the site plan review authority can reach out to any organization.
Including the planning board, including design.
Or they can submit recommendations of their own. They do not require to have someone tell them, although that is usually spurs them to action, because then they actually know about it, but.
Shall we say that?
Sure.
Shall we say what?
Shall we say advisory boards are, are welcome, or may, advisory boards may submit letters of recommendation to the review, or letters of whatever they want to call it, to the review authority.
So, I believe there is actually, when we go onto, under the actual review authority, under site plan review, which is eight eleven eight, it discusses all of the different committees. So, I think Yeching's point here on eight eleven six two is simply to,
Wait a minute.
Change, your request would be to change planning board to the zoning board of appeals.
Yes.
Or whatever their official name is.
Yes.
They're called the Board of Appeals and the zoning.
But then if we changed it, eight eleven point, eight point one, we can include planning board as one of the advisory.
Okay, so why don't we, why don't we, why don't we deal with eight eleven six two? Are there any arguments against the planning, the ZBA being the site plan review for the MBTA overlay districts?
I think Yeching made a good point, that the, the planning board is, I don't know what percent, but a large percent of policy and planning board. And the zoning board of appeals is a board that addresses compliance with the zoning law. And so, it makes sense, what Yeching said, her argument was different. Her argument was, the planning board has already got a ton of stuff on its plate.
Yes, but are there any drawbacks to giving it to the ZBA? Just so, is there,
I think the drawback is that they're appointed, and I don't know, it's one removed from the people in some ways, but, whereas this is an elected board. I, I don't, but, that's, that's the only thing I can think of, in some ways.
Jay, do you know in other towns what the practice is of towns that have submitted already? Planning board?
It's almost exclusively been planning board that I've seen.
And Taylor, you said to me that you favored the planning board, and you felt we had the capacity.
Yep.
So, we have precedent from other communities, we have the town planner thinking we can do it.
Well, I mean, it's more than precedent, it's almost universal. If you say plan generally, it's almost always planning board, that the fact that you've carved out some for the zoning board is fine. But planning board is, the general division of labor in towns is zoning board, all the day-to-day, the enforcement, the variances, the pre-existing non-conformings, of which there are a lot. And then there's some site plan here, and then planning boards are big project people. And that, that's an oversimplification of it, but that's, that's generally has a view, how it's viewed here, looks like the, the planning board has taken ownership a little bit of stuff that happens in downtown area. Seems to me,
It was written into the,
it would be more of a natural for the planning board, but these are all local decisions. I think that carries a lot of weight, though, in precedent and, It doesn't carry any weight technically, but it, I mean, But, but in terms of, you know, making a decision, relying on the trials and errors of others that have done it before, and people that have experience in these matters. Kind of just view it, you, you all are, this board is already dealing with the, the big-ticket projects
We are.
in, in the highly, most highly developed areas of town. This would kind of be an outgrowth of that, I think. Site, site plan, there might be a fair bit of it, although I really don't think there's gonna be that much more than you're already handling, but you'd get into a groove with it, I think.
I will say, the planning board understands the MBTA three A law, as well as anyone in town, and understands the compliance attitude of the writing.
Well, we certainly have the expert here. One concern I have is that site plan review is required for all projects within the MOD. So, this is not,
That are using the MOD.
Yeah, so that, and actually, that's, there's an edit on that, that's,
Just where, your first line memory is the acronym MOD?
Yeah, that's what we're using.
MBTA overlay district.
Okay.
So, that's the only, the only difference is that for CBD projects, we typically only have site plan review for things, you don't have to have them for all projects. Actually, the wording is a little confusing, but my reading is you don't have to have it for all projects.
Okay, but here, where it's by right, this is really just taking the place of a special permit, in, in a way.
Is this an issue, though, with the state? Will they say this is overreach?
No, so, the state has said you can do site plan review. The thing that they look out for, and that Liz, and now me, are looking out for is to make sure that your site plan review doesn't take on that special permit feel, because it's nondiscretionary. It's essentially just checking in on design, you know, just, it's more, much more esoteric than a, than a special permit, where it's a little more high stakes.
And, and the site plan review criteria, not criteria, but sta, what's the sections, eight eleven, no, it's not, it's a, I want to look at the, the list of things.
Eight eleven point four.
Thank you. I want to make sure that they are not,
So, if I, if you could hold on to that thought, Sally.
Oh, no, that's not true, I'm sorry.
So, we can, we can get back to the top-level decision of,
Okay.
Do we want planning board, or do we want ZBA for?
Eight eleven.
I, I think it should be the planning board. I mean, I think that's, I, I think for getting it passed, it's what they're expecting to see. That was one of the suggestions that was made to us, it's what they're used to seeing, so you may as well put it in. But more than that, I think we have spent so much time fleshing out the letter of the law, and we're doing that in the context of the CBD in North Maine, so I think we're the ones who understand the spirit of the law the best, and we should be seeing what's coming in, and this is gonna be a big transformation for town, and I think we're elected, we're representing the town kind of most directly. We work very closely with Taylor, and I think that constancy over time is gonna, is gonna give us a better outcome.
I'm sorry to say, since I know two of you get to dip after this gets passed.
Okay, so Jay, Jay is very persuasive, has turned the tables on this argument.
Not my intent.
I, no, I came in wanting the planning board. Jay had nothing to do with it.
Okay.
I, I think it should be.
So, you're off the hook, Jay.
I will regret this, but I think it should be.
So, where are we going in this? Is there now?
Do we need to vote?
I support the planning board, I mean,
I think it was, it was a question that came up, and so at least we need a consensus. Do we wish to go forward with the planning board as written?
Yes.
And I think we all say yes, and Yeching is like, I'm off in two weeks, go ahead.
Yeah, that sounds great.
Just wanted to release some load here, but.
So, let us move on to, so I'm gonna write down,
So, the site plan review authority,
So, so one of the things that,
Development review authority.
Right, but Sally, you were, you were concerned about how, about the site plan review criteria.
And Yeching directed me to eight eleven six two, which,
So, that's not right.
It's eight eleven eight one.
Right, but,
It has general criteria, and it refers to everything from eight eleven one to eight eleven six, which is pretty mild in terms of not being,
What's with the number in here? There's something just,
Yeah, it goes down and then comes back.
So, I'm just putting that concern on the list of concerns, Sally. We're not discussing it yet. So, the concern is whether our criteria are acceptable.
Okay, back from the other one.
It says dynamic link, I mean,
So, let's, let's move back to, what is your next concern with general development standards?
Okay, the general, so we are back at eight eleven six three.
Okay.
Right?
Site design.
Site design. So, the various elements here, connections, A seems fine. I think Emily had said connections made more sense. It's, it's more direct, it's, it's measurable. Sidewalk shall provide a connection among building entrances, et cetera. B seems fine. It's, it's open space, there was a big discussion on this, and I don't know if you want to get into it now or later.
Well, it is on our list at number four.
Okay, so it says open space shall be appropriate for conservation or passive or active recreational purposes, in the opinion of the site plan review authority, and that just seems very nebulous to me and not measurable.
So, here, I think we, if we're gonna dive into it, we may as well dive into it. We actually do not have any requirements on open space in this section of the bylaw. We have a requirement on open area, but we do not use open space.
And open area appears in section eight in the definitions for the different overlay districts, and that's the note that I put in.
Open space appears there. Open area appears in, in our definitions in number 10.
Oh, well, that's the problem.
And, but the key is that in our dimensional tables, we speak about open area, greenscape, and hardscape. We do not talk about open space in general, and in this particular bylaw, we don't actually have a requirement for open space.
In the table of dimensions?
The table of dimensions says open area. It was incorrectly labeled as open space, because we don't, we don't have a dimensional requirement for open space. So, if we want to add one, that's new, and then we get into the character of open space, and how much of the open area should be open space.
Oh, my gosh.
And that, I think, is, is, then we get, we get into some issues, for instance, and there we need to have someone like Michael here with us to tell us, I think, how much open space do you need for common areas, like sidewalks, and parking, and garbage loading, and all that other stuff that you need open area for. And the stuff that's left over could be green space, which could also be used for recreation and things like that. So, because we don't actually use open space really anywhere.
We do. We use it in the definitions in section eight for the several. Can you find my note that I typed in earlier today?
We have them as definitions.
I'm looking at, I'm looking at this definition, and I'm, I'm trying to find something that is,
We have them in the definitions because you put it there.
Yes, and I found the language in.
It hadn't, hadn't existed in our zoning code before then.
Right, and I was saying that we use the phrase open area liberally in section eight when we're describing the other overlay districts. I searched on it.
You're switching again. So, you're going to open area now.
No, I'm sorry, I'm getting really confused then. Let me go to section eight.
Let's just think about, open area right now is whatever is open to the sky, okay?
And where is that, show up?
Okay.
Eight eleven six three.
So, it's in our dimension table, or in our area table.
Oh, I'm talking about the definition, that's, that's,
The definition is actually in section 10, which isn't in this excerpt.
But if you look at, I'm gonna go to section 10, online.
It doesn't, I don't see open area in the dimensional.
It's in the, it's in the,
Minimum green space.
Yeah, it should be right above minimum green spaces.
No, it doesn't say it in here.
It was there.
This is grayed out, but not open area.
It was there.
Maximum green space.
Group.
Oh, I don't, where, where it says group, that, I don't,
Oh, it got, it got mangled.
Cut off in the printing.
What happened? What is group supposed to say?
Where it says,
Open area.
If you look at ta, eight, right, table three eight eleven, no, I'm sorry, I'm wrong.
Areas should come out, that doesn't mean anything, right?
Yeah, it should be, let's, Taylor will, will show us where we're at.
All right, so it's table three eight eleven.
Two, two eight eleven.
This right here, where in your packets it says group, is supposed to be minimum open area.
Oh, that should say minimum open area.
Yep.
But then you'd have to define that.
Right.
And that is actually,
It's defined in section 10.
Well, I defined it.
No, 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 no.
No, not you, you defined open space.
Is defined in section 10. It's part of our bylaw, it's been there for a number of years.
Okay, and no one has ever challenged it, because we've hardly done any of the overlay districts that use that phrase.
There's no challenge to it, because it's very clear what it is. It's all the area which is open to the sky.
Okay.
That's what open area is.
So, it's not like conservation or open space, it's just not closed.
It's not closed in.
So, like a porch would be open area?
No, because a porch is not open to the sky.
A deck would be.
But a deck would be.
A deck.
Deck would be open area.
Parking lots and,
A parking lot, or,
Cool, I think that was one of the questions.
So, here we go, let's go look to,
Are we in chapter, are we in the zoning bylaw now?
Yep, we're in the bylaw.
Only open area is in there.
Yeah, it's down in,
I saw green space.
No, no, it's really under open area.
I just saw open space, actually.
Keep going, it's way at the end.
You know what, there's a, there's an alphabetization that goes back to A under some,
That's because it's a subsection, so keep it,
Open area is just not occupied by structure.
It's essentially, which is unoccupied by structure, so.
Okay.
I read it as open to the sky. So, the parking goes into the open area.
Or in the building.
If it's underground parking,
Or in the building, yeah.
You can go in the building, too.
No, like if you're standing there and you look up, do you see the sky?
But what if you have first floor parking, and you start your residential uses, like perhaps in the front of the building, and then on the upper floors, but in the back of the building, there's park under, I just,
So, your parking's under the building, it's not in the open area.
So, it doesn't count, that parking doesn't count towards the open area? The under-building parking doesn't?
It's not parking in the open area.
Right, if it, if there's, the only, open area is anything without a structure. So, if you can see it from a satellite, and it's not a building.
It's open area.
Okay.
So, there's no qual, no special quality about open area.
Right. So, then, the fact that Sally put open space in the definitions now for,
Yeah, and I grabbed this from eight point O.
I, it's moved. We're done with it.
So, we take out eight eleven six three C and the definition there.
No, we have to revise it to say open area.
So, just, just replace the word area for space?
No, we can't.
Those are two different things.
So, open space has a bunch of other characteristics that go along with it, which is incompatible with many uses of open area.
So, this is more green space she's describing.
So,
I'm getting really confused. Is open space in our chapter 10 right now?
No, it is not, which is why,
And you're saying we should stick with open area everywhere?
I'm saying the, we only use open area for,
Just a straight dimensional.
Just dimensional requirements. We say open area, greenscape, hardscape, that's it. We don't say anything about the quality of the open area. That comes into when we split it between greenscape and hardscape. So, the introduction of open space into this section of zoning, since it doesn't really fit. I agree, we need something like that somewhere, because we don't talk about the quality of, other than greenscape, but in this, I don't think that it fits here. I think it's orthogonal.
Right, and it is in section eight under other overlay districts, is what I'm trying to say. This is a standard, it occurs in like, I typed it into a box, and it's not.
I, I believe you, it's in the other ones, but in terms of dimensions, the other ones don't, I don't know, maybe the other ones say you have to have so much open space.
No, I'm, I'm happy saying with open area, and it just means open to the sky.
Yeah, so,
As long as we can put that in the dimension, in the definitions.
It is in the definition. It's in Section Ten. It's essentially, I call it open to the sky. It's anything which doesn't have a structure on it. So I would suggest that we delete section.
We don't need C at all.
Right, that's hard.
Yeah, so I would, yeah, we delete C and delete the definition, and anywhere that there, and there is open space in other places, and I think we just change all open space to open area, and at the very least, we're consistent with the rest of the zoning bylaw.
I mean.
So where it said group before, it will say minimum open area, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and then when we move forward to eight eleven six three, we're getting rid of the C and the inserted definition that I cobbled.
I don't think you're wrong.
What?
Wait, ten point, maybe I'm getting it wrong for a second.
Go to Chapter Ten. Chapter Ten. Oh, that's the code. That's, I don't want the code. I want the Z.
Okay.
Got a love.
Okay, so that's coming.
I can't even find it now. I have a link. Okay, good.
I mean, your site plan review is taking into consideration the general quality of open, it says open spaces, but I assume that means like eight eleven six two.
I'm sorry, what?
Yours came from the health services.
The protection of sign, natural site features, the location and design of onsite open spaces.
I'm really annoyed about that.
It's small O, small s, so that's fine to have it in undefined.
Yeah.
I, I see what she, it's, it's defined under other overlay.
If you search on, quote, open space, unquote.
But I agree, but we don't use it for dimensional use as far as I know.
Okay, so we're gonna stick with open area. It's defined in the definitions right here as the percentage of the lot which is not occupied by any structure. Right, now that changes the meaning because, for instance, if you have a deck that doesn't have a roof, the deck is a structure, but that would not count as open area.
Yes, and I was wrong about that. You are right, yes. Deck is a structure. I always forget what structures are. But yeah, and my definition is wrong. Open to the sky is obviously wrong. It's without a structure.
It's not occupied by any structure.
Yeah, so.
So that would include.
So no roof decks either.
I'm sorry?
No roof decks don't count either.
Right, well.
Well, that's an interesting question.
We've got a building underneath them.
Yeah, I think, I think we.
It's not occupied. Yeah, it is a building underneath.
Okay, so.
Wait, Jay, you weren't there yet.
I mean, it's a Venn diagram, right? Do you have to include, does, does the, does the definition of open area have to like include green space? Because green space, is it still open area or those?
I think to interpret it as including the tops of buildings would make everything a hundred percent open, open area. So I think it is intended to be anything where a building isn't.
Yeah.
Where a building is.
Just more for the provision of light and air probably than for green spaces.
Yes, so this is sufficient. This definition in Section Ten is sufficient.
From a dimensional perspective.
Yes, and so if we go to the table where it would say open area, minimum percentage, which is the table.
Two, eight point one.
Table two dash eight eleven, where it says minimum open area, and this is where you were saying we wish we had input at this moment from.
So, no, I was only saying that if we had open space in addition to open area, but we're just doing open area, so.
You are gonna see, I mean, at those numbers, sixty percent, seventy percent, seventy-five percent, you're gonna see some grandfather in for some buildings on, on, from that one. Because there's probably a lot of existing stuff in there that already doesn't comply with that probably.
There's a ton of stuff in, in our districts that do not, that are non-conforming.
I mean, if someone is gonna take something down all the way and completely reconstructs, that's fine, but at those numbers, you're gonna see.
It does seem incredibly big because Parkview takes so, so little building space as does Northwedge Pond.
So, so, do we wanna go?
But it's okay. No, I mean.
Oh, no, we don't want to. So we're just gonna delete the.
Yeah, we're gonna come back to dimensions.
Eight eleven six point three.
Okay, come back to this. Okay, good.
So, so let's continue working through.
Okay.
And we're deleting.
Parking D, right? So we're done with.
Well, parking becomes C, which Taylor will fix.
We'll just, yeah, so.
So parking, C, Section Five One, Section Five Two. Okay, so that part, I mean, we can talk about dimensional requirements later, but.
Okay.
That's fine. It seems, you see it. Plantings, so planting shall include species that are native or adapted to the region. It, it's very nebulous. Plants that, or it's, it's always a moving target because things are changing, and so according to whom, is, what might be my question be? And then percentage wise, how do we know, like, is it all? This just says shall, so it's, it seems to imply all, right?
So this whole question of native and adapted to the area is a very subjective question. It is a mess. Plants have been genetically improved to perform better in the places where they've been, and so is that a native plant? Or is it a genetically modified or genetically improved native? And where it says here, or adapted to the region, I think that means that there's been either spontaneous adaptation or it's been intentional through, through cultivar development, okay? So.
Well, and climate change, it's made us warmer.
And so what I would say, what I said, it is in, my comment is here. That's the second comment down. It says native or adapted covers a lot. It should include invasives as a list, as listed by the Massachusetts Prohibited Plant List, and here's the link.
So that's already in the language, so is there something you need added that's not in there?
Massachusetts prohibited, oh, yeah, if that's specific enough, and I think it is.
So I have, so who we, who we, I mean, if we want to introduce a official source, that's not the right words that I wanna use, then we, you know, who do we turn to? We can turn to the state. We can turn to, you know, my favorite organization, Native Plant Trust, but that's a separate issue. I mean, who do we?
Go ahead.
Can you have your further concom and see if they'll weigh in on plantings or?
I mean, I think.
Can I make my suggestion?
Sure.
And this is, to me, because there may not always be a prohibited plant list. They'll call it something else. It could, terms like that become archaic pretty quick. You, there is nothing prohibiting. You have the, you make the general statement that it's gotta be either native or adapted, right? For use, which to me would exclude things that are prohibited. You can adopt regulations after the fact that are more flexible. Work with Taylor and have a whole list of things that where if for some reason the nomenclature changes or there's a list or something else, simple vote of the planning board rather than a town meeting action does those kinds of things. So you can do a law.
So in our regulations, we could say that in particular, let's not do any exotic invasives because they're taken over.
You could have plant lists. You could reference whatever.
Conservation.
Massachusetts prohibited plant list. If you like New Hampshire's better, you could use theirs. It does, all I'm saying is, when, when you're getting into precise definitions of exactly what you want, a general statement is sometimes better because if you have to change a very specific statement, we know what town meeting can be like.
So how would you word C plantings? Oh, E plantings.
D now.
D.
Oh, it's about D.
I would just take out the second sentence, honestly, because I think the first sentence says everything. It's gotta be appropriate for the area, and then you backfill with regulations after we get through the town.
Does it say C, C whatever?
The planning board regulations.
We already have the authority to adopt regulations.
Do we have to refer to them in the bylaw?
You don't have to.
Good.
You can. We can have something at the end of this bylaw, because I, I don't know if there's anything in there now, the eight eleven ten, that says the, the planning board may adopt regulations consistent with this bylaw.
So we, we do have something on design guidelines, which says that we, the planning board will create such, under eight eleven six two, Site Plan Review, it talks about design guidelines. Oh, now here, yeah, so it's, eight eleven six two says the Site Plan Review Authority may adopt and amend design guidelines. So that explicitly talks about design guidelines. Is that, and that covers plantings as well?
Sure.
Okay, so we're good. So we're going to.
Although it does, that's what we can.
Eight eleven six two. Here it is. Okay, what?
I don't know if one, if one of the items, it says, and not subjected and may only address, and then there's a list, and I don't know.
So you know, you know, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be terrible to just put in eight eleven ten and state the.
What you said.
The planning board may adopt regulations consistent with.
With this bylaw, right, and can I ask in eight eleven dot six dot two, where there's a textual list, can that be a bulleted list or a numbered list? Because it's very hard to read. And if you are going through a checklist of things, it will be easier graphically looking at the bylaw.
So can we, can we?
Is that loud? Oh, loud.
I just want, if that, if we're talking about typography and layout.
Okay, later.
Move that to later, please.
Yep.
So let us, so we're now, we've dealt with E plantings, and we've added a section at the end which states that eight ten, eleven ten, the planning board may adopt guidelines consistent with this bylaw, so that.
Adopt regulations.
Regulations, sorry, thank you. Jay, is there a technical difference between guidelines and regulations?
Well, the, because the statute allows you to do regulations, they, they might have a little bit more force than a mere guideline, but legally, no.
Okay.
Well, if they say shall and must, they have more weight as recommendation, I mean, as, as regulations, but we're not, we're not there. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so let's move on. Anything further on that one?
No, I think, so we're gonna strike at the second sentence, right? I can't, I can't see it on Taylor's screen.
We're now off to lighting.
Lighting, C, Section Five Four, seems right, fine. Mechanicals, I think you had a comment about that, yeah, and then it got changed.
Yeah, I asked that it bring in the language from the CBD would actually put in a limit to the height of mechanicals, which is just word for word what is, was in the CBD.
He may exceed the maximum building height by four feet, and do we address anywhere the, the screening of rooftop?
It says so right there. Rooftop mechanical equipment shall be screened to visible from a public right of way. Screening it from people in other tall buildings is always a problem. I don't know that that's possible. So if it's, if it's visible from a public right of way, it has to be screened. It's a second, it's a second.
Yes, I know. I see that. I believe that is a subjective statement because our town is in a valley.
So how are you going to define, I mean?
I have no idea. You would say from a public right of way, you know, not more than three blocks from the building, something like that.
You're thinking if someone is standing on a street and they look out and they see it.
So that, that, that sentence was specifically supplied to us by the state.
Okay, then I think we can just leave it. If people wanna have a problem with it, we can.
I'm sure there's some sort of legal precedent, Jay, which says that the right of way can't be a mile away with binoculars, which would be.
Yeah, I mean, like, say you were, say you were standing at the top of Vine Street looking out over the village.
Yeah, there's, there's no way you could prevent any building, especially, let's say.
I think the spirit of it is intended to be something close proximity. I think that to, you know, you can twist any statement around. It's the reasonable person standard applies, so.
Yeah, because otherwise.
You're not gonna find a hill and a telescope and say, you're violating.
I can see your rooftop mechanicals.
It would, it would essentially mean that you couldn't have mechanicals in any one-story building because you could see it from just about, you know, you could jump high enough, a tall basketball player could see it.
You could see it from the next door build. Oh, that's not a public way, right?
Okay, so mechanicals, dumpsters, Oreo can dumpsters.
Seems all right.
Stormwater management.
I don't know enough to know, but it seems like.
I'm assuming engineering saw it.
They're pretty good.
Or it's standard from the state.
Okay.
Okay, and then what's missing here might be that once we strike open space, is there a way to qualitatively or to, to use design review to sort of ask the development to make the open space a little bit better?
We're not using open space.
Open area.
Open area, excuse me.
Small case open space, not big case open space.
And, and that already is an item that can be in your design guidelines under eight eleven six two.
We can do this.
Yeah, because it says the location and design of onsite open spaces.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so any other concerns with developmental standards?
I guess developmental standards covers the rest, right? Building general, building height, and I didn't see anything.
No, developmental standards.
Yeah, it goes, everything on the eight eleven six.
Eleven six, okay, six four.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Oh, we have a double number here. We have a six four and a six four.
Well, we both.
Okay, good, yes.
So, so the other entry which I asked Taylor to put in was the definition of height, because we didn't have it, and there are two definitions of height in the zoning bylaws. There's one in Section Ten, and there's one in the CBD. And if we want people to put in, I think, you know, pitched roofs and things like that, then having the CBD definition, which goes up to halfway between the peak or whatever it is, makes more sense than just to the top of the roof.
If it's a sloped roof.
If it's not a sloped roof, then it's by definition up to the top.
Because I've been looking at mansard roofs, and some of them have the little mansard shape. A lot of them have a hip roof that is only a little, few feet higher than the top of the mansard, and some of them have just absolutely flat roof, but would you be saying that you would only be measuring halfway to the ridge on a sloped roof? Sorry to be picky, but.
I would say that if you went to an architect, they could give you a hundred different definitions which would violate anything you could come up with. So go to a Frank Gehry building and ask what that.
Oh, well, those don't even.
Yeah, I don't, answer your question, Sally. I don't think we can come up with a simple definition that'll match.
Right, and the way that other towns have done it is by completely changing their zoning to other forms of zoning, and we're not gonna do that tonight or any time in the next.
Yeah, I mean, we have two examples in our zoning bylaw, one of which is, and I think the CBD, personally, I think the CBD one makes more sense.
Halfway up the slope?
Yeah.
But then that, that is a little bit more subjective, so, because how are you, just like you said, a hundred people will answer that differently. So then, wouldn't it make more sense then if it's kind of, it can alter that definition to make, take it from Section Ten?
So there's an actual diagram in the CBD, which isn't in here, but it is referred to, I believe.
Yep.
Seven three one. I mean, we have the problem with water field, which is the question is where does the roof begin? Does it begin where the rubber or does it begin at the parapet?
And I think that it was determined by consensus that it begins at the rubber.
But there were a number of architects on their side who had, were confused about our definition as to how to apply it, so.
We shall be clear then.
Yeah, so this is the midpoint of the roof, so.
Right, but like, like Sally said, a mansard is.
Mansard or a flat-roofed building?
Flat roof, it makes sense. It's just the top.
In fact, it says it right here.
But a mansard, you know, it can slope just slightly and then be.
Can be flat or it can be a hip.
Like eighty percent of it is.
Well, but I don't know, I guess.
Here's, here's what it says right here. If a portion of a building which does not have a pitched roof will be measured from the mean grade of the existing ground level adjoining the building at each exterior wall to the top of the roof line.
Okay.
So on a mansard that has a very minor hip roof above is the top of the roof line, the peak of the hip.
Probably, yeah.
Probably.
I mean, if it's only a couple of feet dis- difference, then it's not gonna make a big difference, right?
Well, but if we're being precise and objective, two feet is not nothing. It's what it is.
So how would we solve this? Let me turn it around and say, if this isn't sufficient, what do we do?
What I would say is come up with, what we mean for what we think are the most, the three or four most common building roof types. the three or four most common building roof types. So we say if it's a flat roof.
Has this been a problem?
Not that I know of.
Well, it was. It was a problem.
In what context?
In the context of the ten Congress Place building, where they wanted to make it taller by interpreting the language to mean that it starts. No, they would have been able to make it taller if it started at the roof.
I don't recall that being an issue with them.
All right, then my.
I'm wondering if, like, the building commissioner, I mean, Tom's new, but I, I mean, I'm not sure if it's ever been a hassle on, say, expansions or additions to houses. Which is, I think, where this would come up more. To the extent that someone has a mansard and wants to make a mansard, and it could use it to tweak a height maybe higher, or if there's an interpretation of it that would require it be lower because of this interpretation. I, I'm doubting that if there's been traffic in it, in the building department, that there's been much of it. I think it's likely to come only in smaller.
Yeah, and I do think the top of the roof line means the absolute peak of the building.
Well, the top of the roof line.
Of the roof structure, not, not parapets.
The mean grade to the midpoint of the roof. So. A portion which.
See, section, section three one.
So if.
Is a diagram that's only one building type.
So if, if it's a mansard, then the roof is what's on top of the mansard, and it's, you know, halfway up that, you know, if the mansard is two feet tall, then halfway up there is a foot.
Okay, all right.
I mean, if it's more pitched than that.
And if it's a flat-roofed building, it will be the second sentence.
Yeah, it will be to the roof line. So I, I don't. I don't know that it. We should wait and see if this is an issue. And if it is an issue, then I think we can resolve it. But I don't, I don't know, I don't think we have enough information to know how this is going to be applied at the moment.
And this language that we're using, buildings colon height, is that something that is present in accepted three A zoning bylaws in other municipalities?
Yes, the section headers were taken from the.
I couldn't hear.
The section headers were taken from the state.
For what? For that, for that right there?
We, but we added, we added height. So when we have buildings colon general, that's taken from the state. We added buildings height.
Is this draft what Michael put together based on the CBD guidelines?
Uh, no, Michael did not put this together. Emily and us helped us put this together.
Okay, but is it, is it based on the guidelines that we already have in the CBD?
It's a combination of guidelines that are, it's a combination of, of a lot of existing guidelines, not just the CBD.
What does section ten say about height?
It follows the height of, of, it's, it's different.
Yeah, I mean, I, one of the things that I think is that.
Is it different, like, such that you don't wanna go with it?
So the thing, the, so we, what's, in the definition is different than what's in CBD. So CBD has its own definition of height, which is the midpoint of the roof. Everywhere else, it's top.
Okay, so you're, so.
But does top include parapet?
CBD, or is this a third definition?
This tracks CBD.
This tracks CBD.
Yeah.
The.
So.
The, the, the section.
And that's fine, it should track CBD.
Yeah, because it's, it's similar sort of development, and we want it to be consistent, yeah. So in the, in section ten, it's the height from the mean grade to the highest point of the roof. And so this is mean grade to the midpoint of the roof, which gives you more flexibility when you wanna put it in a half-story. So are we, are we anymore about height? Then we can move on to any other concerns.
Can you talk about the origins of eight eleven six point six? And was that a state thing, or was that Emily's?
Yes, that's correct. It's, it's provided in the state sample.
So I think.
Okay, but we're saying open area, and this says capital O, capital S.
Right, so.
Eight eleven six six.
Yes.
But it, but that's just because all words are capitalized in your subject heading.
No, but this is in the final sentence of eight eleven six six.
And, and I have a comment next to it saying, we should change this to open area.
Okay, so that should say open area.
Yep, any.
It would be a capital A.
Yep.
I think that you don't wanna have anything there. I think you wanna take that sentence out, because the sentence before it talks about open space in a small O context. It's a different issue.
Talks about outdoor space.
And to be honest, that space will be counted anyway.
Right, it would be counted anyway, but this is, this is definitely, the, the language that's in there evidently coming from the state is more of a qualitative versus a dimensional thing. So I would take out the, your graphic, the last sentence there.
Yeah, because it doesn't add anything anyway.
Right.
Okay. So.
So we're deleting, all outdoor space shall count toward the project's minimum open area requirement, or space, whatever we.
Yep.
But we're deleting it, so we don't care what it says.
Yep.
And it, and it could be that it doesn't count, right?
Right, rooftop.
Because it could be within a building or.
That's true, you could have, that's right, so.
Again, go into the qualitative nature of the joint outdoors without the, going to the dimension.
Correct, because if you're open, if this is in a gazebo, and a gazebo is a structure, then it will not count. Okay.
Okay, eight eleven six point eight. A, such entry shall be connected by paved surface, I mean, paved seems very.
I'm sorry, eight eleven six point eight?
It's eleven six seven online.
Oh, yeah, I changed them.
It's eight up there.
Right, because he's changing.
I'm changing them actively.
What's the header that you're going to?
A, A.
So, Iching, you're reading off of the live document?
Yes, I am.
We're all reading off of the paper document.
Oh, geez.
It's okay. We're talking about corner lots.
Let's, let's just go by the titles of the sections.
Yeah, the titles of the sections would be helpful.
The title of the section is.
Corner lots.
Corner lots, okay.
Thank you. So.
So entry shall be connected by paved surface, it's, it's a very determined aspect. I mean, could, I mean, couldn't it be?
Brick or.
Brick or, yeah. Or stone dust.
You're saying it's too specific?
Yeah.
Well, what else would you have?
Stone dust, bricks, or like, impervious, yeah.
Brick?
No, we don't want it to be long.
Paved.
Paves means anything that has, is a hard surface, right? So you can pave with bricks, you can pave with bluestone.
I would say hard surface is better than paved.
Yeah, it's a very specific thing.
So stone dust is a highly, a totally permeable surface, right? But it does degrade much more quickly than a paved.
So, so saying hardscape surface seems right.
Paved by a hardscape.
I mean, did this come from the state too? Was this a suggestion from?
I'm trying, I'm trying to pull it up.
So, so, Iching, you're concerned with the word paved? I didn't quite grasp it.
It's, it's a very narrow subset of what's possible in materials. And, and, but I understand it should connect to the public sidewalk. But it, paved has a limited number of pallet, like, whereas you could, you could be more creative with it, perhaps.
Well, I think, okay, so my, my, when I look at this, I see this as a safety issue primarily.
But a hardscape.
The hardscape. Hardscape sounds better.
Design choice, so if they say brick would look good, they'd say, well, I have to pay.
Okay, so let's change hardscape. And if we had come up with a better word than that, but at least we know.
So here, Iching, here's the, here's the state's suggestion.
So, yeah, they totally did that.
So let's call it a hardscape surface.
Why is this under corner lots and not under buildings? Because all buildings need a connection to a sidewalk, and we're saying that it should be hardscape.
Yeah, I think it's weird.
Well, this is, this is just the example from the state. You mean, and here, and ours? Oh, the corner lots.
We're just, so ask the state, I guess. Well, there's a corner lot and there's an infill lot.
Well, they would also have to have two.
Frankly, these are things, and correct me if I'm wrong, you don't have to have A, B, and C in there at all.
You don't have to have anything if you don't.
Yeah.
So the corner lot, building on a corner lot shall indicate a primary entrance either along or, and then things like A, B, and C could, again, be in your regulations.
Yeah, I think that.
I mean, why are we trying to dictate exactly the material they're gonna use on a walkway to the street? It's probably more specific than we need.
It is true that the most salient point of a building on a corner lot is which is the primary.
Is that?
Entrance.
Isn't that, well, this says it's.
That's in the main language, I'm just saying, A, B, and C.
Well, I think A, we can, I agree with A. B, I think, is an important design element.
But you don't, you don't talk about these aspects with the other buildings that are not on corner lots. So like, why introduce these aspects now?
They would go up into general building.
There are two facades to a corner lot, and so you're like, you have to dictate where the primary one is.
You would move these three letters to the building's general.
Are they trying to prevent one entrance from being inaccessible?
I think so too, it seems like it would be.
I mean, you don't have to lose them, keep them in mind to.
So we'll move A, B, and what about C?
I mean.
C as well?
I mean, that's gonna be code.
It's gonna be code.
What they're saying is not.
Not on the facade, not on the two primary facades.
So it would have to be on.
I don't think the building code says that fire exits can't face the street.
Correct, this is more of a design.
This is a design thing, so that would be a regulatory thing.
I think, I think that's, I think that's a question of, can you have a side door that's a main entrance, such as sort of grass? Like, is it accessible from all entrances? I think that's the reason it's in there. Because it's not, it's to the public sidewalk, so I think it's like, can you have.
But you're still on A.
I know, are we throwing A completely?
A is just for the.
No, I think we're putting A and saying hardscape, and it's gonna move to our regulations.
But A is only for the primary entrance, so.
Well, where it says such entries, it's like, what?
Yeah, and that refers back to primary entrance.
A primary entrance, a primary.
Okay, so we're gonna move A through C into regulations. Are we gonna keep the main heading on there?
I think so, I think it's good, yeah.
Okay, so now we're all happy with that. We'll move on to infill lots. I don't have an issue with that.
You don't have an issue with this?
Do, do you have the same opinion about the multiple buildings?
About what?
Multiple buildings, says a paved pedestrian network, so I think a hardscape pedestrian network's probably the right change.
Where did that come from? Where is that?
It's above, it's the section two above, about, so.
Oh, we skipped that.
Corner lots, skip outdoor space, go up to multiple buildings.
I apologize, I skipped that.
Multiple buildings on a lot, right. And so it would say.
Should be hardscaped.
Oh, I see.
It would say a hardscape pedestrian network, right?
Right.
It's, it's B under eight eleven six five, and it's at the bottom of the page. The header is at the bottom.
I see it, yeah.
So we could equivalently move these things into the regulations? If we're gonna move all the rest, then maybe we will.
Yeah.
They're qualitatively the same.
So what happens with our CBD regulations is that they're subjective and open to interpretation.
And these would not be, because they would have to pass state muster for.
The regulations have to pass state muster?
Yeah, you get that, you get, well, we're not gonna.
Well, if we, if the regulations.
But you can't, no, that's not how it works, because regulations can't be any more strict.
Yeah, yeah, but, but then.
The state isn't gonna be scrutinizing your regs.
But the state, if, if the regs are used to make it difficult to build.
You couldn't do that. I mean, legally, it's just.
Legally, you couldn't, yes. So that means that the regs have to be less subjective than what we have in the CBD now.
So for instance, if.
regs are design guidelines. So regs are to help you fill in the gaps, that's all.
So I don't know what the answer is.
They're not binding. All right, I think so. So in this section that we're looking at, the number of which is on the previous, bottom of the previous page, it's eight eleven six five buildings dash multiple buildings on a lot. And then we go into some fine points that frankly, they could, many of these could appear in general. Or they go into regulations.
Or they go into regs.
Right. And so let's take C, for example, the orientation of multiple buildings on a lot should reinforce the relationships among the buildings. All buildings besides shall be treated with the same care and attention in terms of entries, fenestration materials. So you've got a should and a shall in there. And.
I mean, that, that is probably the only one that you really need.
Yeah, I do think that.
Among all of them.
Isn't this a regulation thing?
Well, it could be, but, I mean, you don't really need any of them, but if you wanted to have something about multiple buildings on a lot, that one is a very general statement.
To reinforce the relationship.
And allow you to have flexibility. It's more of like along the design guidelines. We're gonna be looking at your orientation of buildings to each other.
Right, and it's going to come up in the review process that the review authority is conducting, right?
Yeah, how is it oriented? And like, things like, so D is definitely to me like a regulation. Building adjacent to the public street shall have a pedestrian entry facing the public street. But what if the design is better without it? You know, so C is much more objective. We wanna have good relationships between the buildings.
So.
But C talks about relationships between buildings, and D talks about the relationship of the building to the street.
It's a more specific design detail.
Yeah, and frankly, I think D is probably pretty important.
It, it probably is, but I bet we can come up with a design that doesn't have a pedestrian entry facing the public street that's awesome.
Yeah.
A secret garden.
A secret garden, yes, no, I definitely saw it.
So, so, so the question we have before us is, which of these do we leave? Which of these do we put into the regs?
C has to stay.
I mean, I like A is kind of.
Yes.
At least the first sentence.
When you say you like it, do you like it for regs or for bylaw?
I think it's good in the bylaw here, because there are multiple buildings are gonna have parking and circulation issues.
Yes.
Okay, so.
I don't think you need the second sentence there.
Okay, so, well, I agree.
Second bit might be driven by use.
So parking and loading areas shall be connected to minimize curb cuts onto public rights of way.
Very specific.
Where possible, though, it's not, it's, it's not restrictive, it's just sort of like.
So. So when it says where possible, that means it's not a requirement, so it's probably regs. So let's move.
So first sentence would be in the bylaw, and the second sentence would be in the regs, is what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, I just don't see why they would have to be, why you'd be sending a signal that they have to be.
Connected?
I mean, that to me sounds like more of a design.
Well, what he's, what, I think this is something that Michael would talk about, and the curb cuts make it very dangerous for pedestrians. So combining one curb cut, whether you're a truck coming in to unload merchandise or, or moving a tenant, or whether you're just parking your car.
I'm not disputing that at all. And, and, I mean, I don't, I don't disagree with the premise. I just, you're getting into the kind of detail that would happen during site plan review under regs generally. The other thing, and I, I think is helpful, is the less detailed we are here The other thing, and I, I think is helpful, is the less detailed we are here about what you, your project must comply with X, the more we're likely gonna have less scrutiny from HLC.
I have a question. I, I, well, in addition to that we should say shall instead of should and all of that, I, I've gotta note, rules and regulations should be done after town meeting.
A hundred percent.
No, no, what are we doing here?
We're doing the bylaw.
Okay.
We're ta, we're ta, we're trimming the bylaw down to what we think is essential after town meeting.
By law, you're going to the board.
Okay, so, so we're gonna have a, a whole lot more to... We're spending more time doing rules and regulations after town meeting?
Well, Taylor is.
Your job's yours.
For the city business district rules and regulations, it took several years.
Years?
Yes.
But, but it's iterative, right?
It's iterative, but it took several years, 'cause I was on town meeting a couple of years before I got on the select board or the planning board, and I voted for it. And when I got onto the planning board, it was just being done. So, it takes time, because you have to add it in with all the other stuff the planning board does.
I, I'll also like to note that a lot of the, a lot of the ones that have been passed at town meeting so far are between five and seven pages. Right now, we're at fourteen. So, we have a lot more detail than a lot of other communities are putting into their overlay. Now, there's a lot of reasons that could be. One could be, they have many other overlays, or they have maybe rule, they, they have bylaws that, you know, enforce overlays more, more strictly. But we do have a lot of detail in ours, and we match closely to what the state is asking for in our sample zoning. So, this isn't good or bad.
Did Emily give us a rationale for why?
For...
For why we have fourteen pages?
Because if...
Or she did it the way she did it.
Yeah, so if we go...
Because I, I have less, um, I mean, I know Michael. I, I have, I don't know Emily that well in terms of this.
Emily's a little more long-winded.
Well, I don't have, I, I don't have the same confidence, because I don't know her in terms of a design person.
Yeah, so if we go to the state's, the state's wording, this is a fifty-page document that they're asking, you know, that they explain each section by section, where they say, this is why, this is what we suggest you include and why. So, it's obviously not, it's not fifty pages. But when Emily was helping us do this, she was going through, here, let's go up to the... So, here are all of the, here's the table of contents, and going through each one. And that's why our document might be a little bit longer, is because we're taking each one very specifically.
And, and, and the result, is she, she going for a result that would make for a town appearance that is nicer, or...
One that would, that would comply.
That's it?
Well, it's, 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 compliance is a huge part of the, of our goal, yeah.
But I think she's also...
But it's not it.
I'm sorry, I keep interrupting you. My apologies. One, I think she's also responding to a lot of the concerns she heard from people in terms of design review and design guidelines. And so, what we're seeing in here is pulling in things that the state would probably be okay with, but because that's something, that was an issue that she heard a lot from. So, we've spent a lot of time on this particular section, so can we make a decision as to how we're gonna handle this and move on? Because we're already...
I mean, at some point, we have to trust what she did.
So, can I, I mean, so, A, the first sentence in A is good.
So, that would keep in the bylaw?
I think the B is okay. I would just take out the word paved and just say a pedestrian network shall... I don't even think you need it. Just a pedestrian network shall connect parking to the entries of all buildings.
Okay, I can see that.
And the buildings to each other. And then, we can go to materials later. I think we talked about C as being kinda nice. I mean, whether you need the second sentence or not, I don't know.
I think you do, so you can't have some, like, lousy shed in the back.
No, I, I, it's fine.
Sort of like pay attention to all of your buildings.
I can visualize what would happen if we didn't, so...
And, and I don't think you need D. So, I think you essentially have first part of A and B less the word paved and all of C. And I, I think that makes for a nice section as to how, that you have expectations with respect to multiple buildings on a lot.
Multiple buildings on a lot.
Okay.
I'm okay with that.
So, we're done with that. Taylor, thanks for noticing we'd skipped that.
You get all that, Taylor? Good.
Um, so, let's move on to infill lots, which is, um, buildings colon infill lots. I think we said we were okay with that. I can't remember anymore.
I don't think it's on our list.
Oh, I thought, I have notes say move to design regs, but...
I'm sorry, what? Each one?
I have notes that say move to design regs, but that might have been wrong. Infill lots.
No, does corner lots move to?
No, I, I know. I did that for both, for some of the other.
Oh, I think that the, since these are actual setbacks.
I think this stays in the bylaw.
I think we have to leave this here.
Yeah.
And, and I thought it was well worded.
Okay, so, let's, let's move on to buildings, principal facade, and parking. I, I don't have an...
Well, so Carrie had the question, does this include bike parking? And, um...
Nope.
It does not. The answer is no?
The answer's no. Taylor responded, no.
Oh, I see. Yours was there.
I just didn't know if you could stick a bike rack.
In the front of the building?
It's within the setbacks, right? Parking shall not be located in the setback between the principal building and the lot line. But I didn't know if that applied to bike racks.
I think that...
Or if it matters. He said no. It's fine. Well, it'll be part of our discussion when we...
Yes, we're ready.
Yeah, I'm actually, I would like to see a drawing of what that actually means.
Of what what means?
A.
The setback?
Parking should not be located in the setback between the principal building and any lot line adjacent to the public right-of-way.
So, if you have a back lot line that backs up to a non-public way, like somebody's house?
Yeah, but that's already taken care of by the first sentence. So, I guess it's, so I'm trying to imagine...
No, it's not.
The rear of the site.
It'd be nice to, if we had Emily here.
Oh, I'm sorry. It should, it could be, yeah, you're wrong. I mean, you're right, I'm wrong.
So, but parking shall not be located in the setback between the principal building and any lot line adjacent to the public right-of-way.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. I mean, we just saw the house with the, yeah, the spot that's between the porch and the sidewalk.
You just don't want parking on the street.
Right, or along...
Along the street.
In front of the building along the street.
On the lot, in front of the building.
Right.
They wanna have the hill in the, show.
Parking, yes, right.
So...
That, that creates a street scape that we think is more appealing.
Yes. Um...
Okay, so you...
So, I think A is fine as is, and it can stay in the bylaw, correct?
Yeah, definitely. That's fine.
Okay, B?
Um, B is a design requirement, but I think we should leave it in here, because I think it's important. It actually mirrors, um... Mirrors what's actually in the first sentence under the main heading.
I'm not, I'm just not sure what it means.
The, the principal pedestrian entry into the building shall be more prominent in design and placement than the vehicular entry?
So, how could...
Yeah, you don't, the parking garage, where you're...
Okay, so, if they wanna say that the par, entry to the parking garage shall not be visible...
No, I think more prominent in design and placement means that...
But, uh, prominent, I mean, a parking is always gonna be more prominent than a pedestrian unless you make a giant archway or something like that.
Just because your car is bigger than the person.
Right, if, if you wanted to have something where you didn't want entrances to parking garages along the frontage of, you know, where you're near the street, and you always want them to be around the side or something like that. I could see that, but I'll, I might put it in the design guidelines. I just don't know... And I don't know where this comes from or not, but when I see words like prominent, and I have to defend that, I'm like, what, what does that say?
That's subjective to you.
So, when I see it...
It just doesn't mean that...
If it's on the same plane...
How could it be, how could a pedestrian access unless you were lighting it up with neon and everything be more prominent than entrance to a parking garage?
I, I imagine they're trying to say that pedestrian entrance is closer to, but it doesn't describe that at all.
Right, so on the same plane, the plane where pedestrians should be closer to the street than...
I almost think that this...
As a promenade.
Why don't we...
It's not gonna be a lot of favor.
Let the site plan review people say that, that's in, that's in our face. Why don't we...
Mm-hmm.
Or we could state that there should be a, a relationship that minimizes the appearance of, of, uh, of the entrance to parking garages.
Right.
And that goes into the regs.
Okay, so, A, I mean, excuse me, B is...
I don't even know if it has to go in the regs. I just...
Oh, I think so.
Although I, I, I would favor it there.
Yes.
If you wanted to say in here, like, the visual impacts of parking garages shall be minimized or something like that, I, I mean, fine, then...
I think that sounds a lot better than...
In our discussion with Liz the other week, she, she didn't like the word minimize, because it was non-quantifiable.
I mean, I, I would just kinda stick, put it in the regs.
I would put it in the, when I read this, I think of a snout house.
That's right, that's right, and that's what they're, what's...
So, but, but there, but it really doesn't explain, I think it's, it's unclear how you, what, what you're supposed to do to solve this problem.
Well, but you also may come up with a site that is weird and quirky, and it needs an integrated garage. And the only way to do it, and one of the sacrifices you make, is to have it maybe be more prominent than you'd like.
Right.
So, to have in here that it can't be more prominent is kind of a limiting factor. And that's why you pick it up in site, site design, and you could have it in a design guideline or in the regs.
And in this instance, then, well, okay.
So, I would, yeah, I'm for putting it in the regs.
Yep.
Okay, we have a consensus. What about the next one?
Architectures to educate, no, buildings.
I, I think, I, I think that was probably what we were trying to say more.
I like this one.
Yeah, I like it.
I think we can leave it in here, because I think it's...
In bylaw.
Yeah, because I think it's pretty clear. It's, we, we...
Suck your parking in, but...
Right.
We, we don't want massive parking lots. Okay, structures, okay. Moving on, historically significant structures. Um, we have a map that is going to be accompanied, so what's in?
Oh, are you inserting?
It will be inserted.
Okay.
So, let's just, so let's...
But this map that was with parcels shown in red is in the CBD, section seven point three of our zoning bylaw. And we do not have a map of historically significant structures elsewhere in the square miles of Winchester, and, um...
We've, I've, I've made it.
So, it's...
You made a map of all the historically significant structures?
For the overlay, yeah.
All we care about are the ones in the MOD.
I haven't seen it, okay.
So, let's...
Actually, no one has seen it.
So, let's just look at the wording in, in eight, eleven, six, X, whatever X is.
What, I didn't see X anywhere.
Because I don't know what the number is.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. You called historically significant structures?
Yes, anything in there? I think we have to take out character of the town of Winchester Center, because it's no longer the center.
Stop it for the character of the town.
I'd just say the town of Winchester, remove the center.
Remove center, fine.
Okay.
These structures...
Now, they...
And it's gonna be eight, eleven, six, eleven, right?
Well, we're gonna have to go through and fix all the numbers.
The numbers will be fixed automatically, so...
Well, we hope.
They will be.
Okay, and now, so here's this new map. Oh, and it's, should...
So, it's all, the...
The, just the numbers are...
Let's not worry about the numbers.
Yeah.
So, the only thing in there is shall be preserved to the maximum extent possible. Is that language too extreme for the state?
Whi, which language?
This is in the historically significant structure, second to last sentence. The phrase after the comma, shall be preserved to the maximum extent...
It's not really that strong. I mean, it just says extent possible.
I think it's fine.
Okay, that's just one, so, we're good with that section. We're gonna skip over to waivers, because we don't have a map. I think...
What are the compliance guidelines?
Yeah, that was one of my questions. What are the compliant, what are we, what guidelines are we complying with?
Well, the compliance guidelines are the guidelines issued by the Commonwealths.
Well, if that is the case, then we need to define it.
Is that what this means?
I don't know. That was my, my question was which, what are the compliance guidelines?
Okay, so, Taylor, you, you have a, um, document up on your computer that is, maybe you don't anymore. It was, if you go to the 3A website for the state...
So, the question is, are those the, are, are we talking about those? Are we talking about the design regulations?
Where did that language come from?
I don't know. It could been, Emily could, there's a lot of people it could have come from.
Right, so...
Why don't we say, and subject to compliance with EO HLC requirements? I mean, if, if that's where it came from, why wouldn't you, you could just state that. I have no idea where it came from.
I'm, I'm happy with that. I just need to put a source. So, H, or E, whatever the heck that...
Yeah, you have D H C D, by the way, in the definitions, and that'll, that'll have to change to EO HLC.
Oh, yeah, they changed.
So, we're, we're introducing the word E, O...
Is, is that sentence even, i- i- is it even necessary? Why can't you just start with site plan review authority may waive?
Well, so that would say, it would take out the question...
I don't, I don't have any, I mean...
If we do what Taylor just said, and we take out the first phrase, upon request of the applicant and subject to compliance with something, comma, and we just start with the site plan review authority may waive one or more requirements of this section, general development standards, in the interests of design flexibility and overall project quality, and upon finding of consistency of such variation with the overall purpose and objectives of the mod, that's...
That's, that's good.
That stands alone, fine.
Yeah, because the, the compliance guidelines would limit your flexibility rather than increase it. So, let's just, let's take it out.
Right.
So, we're, we're starting that section as the...
The.
This, the, how many does?
Site plan.
One, two, three, four.
Now, we were referring, it, okay, we'll have to fix the language and make sure it's consistent.
What, no, no, what is the compliance guidelines?
We're getting rid of it.
We're gonna have to bring it out. Nobody knows.
We are, we are, in our ignorance, we are, but we've also, I think...
Are we missing something?
I, I think that...
We don't have Emily here, so...
Well, we think the compliance guidelines are the whole document that is the guidelines for compliance with the MBTA 3A law that's been published by the EO HLC. But we're gonna take it out.
But the point is, whatever we waive will make us, make it easier to develop, or it will make it easier to submit a package. It doesn't mean that. It's just, um...
It's also gonna make the state happy that you have the waiver authority.
Yeah, so that's, it's...
That's good.
So, let us move on to, so we're done with developmental, development standards. Let us move on to dimensional requirements, because that was number two on my list.
We're done with affordability?
No, we're, affordability is, is, that's not on my list of, that we set up at the beginning.
Oh, I think we wanna review it.
Okay.
Yeah, we will, but right now, we are going to dimensional requirements. So, um, we are now at...
I'm getting there.
Table two, eight, eleven, dimensional requirements.
So, the numbering of the tables is really confusing.
We'll, we'll work that out.
So, it's confusing to me too, Sally, but that's the way that we do it in our bylaws. I don't, or, I don't know why, but we have the table number, and the number goes up for each section, and then you do a dash, and then for the section it's in.
It's in.
I don't know why, but I just wanted to be consistent, so...
This is table two, and it's eight, eleven.
So, let's take a look at, um, so, we already talked about naming of districts, and we may as well face that issue right now.
Oh, I thought we were gonna do that last.
Do it last.
Yeah.
We can do it last, but it's staring us right in the face.
Well, I, I don't know why, you don't just take care of it.
Okay, so, we can do this quickly, I think.
Ah.
Okay, on the table, the, the phrase on the first line says underlying zoning district. Shouldn't that say sub-district?
It should say sub-district.
No.
It should be removed, actually.
No, it, this was to, it specifically addressed the question. I don't know, when we talk about each of these...
Oh, no, I see it, yeah.
Each of these MOD sub-districts, um, are within an underlying zoning district.
Why do we need it, though?
Because sometimes we say, um...
Refer to the underlying.
It, this shall be governed by the underlying zoning.
We don't say that anywhere here.
Don't we say that in the very beginning, where there's in conflict, the underlying?
No, it's where there's in conflict, this one rules.
I, yeah, I just don't want it to be implied that where the table could apply to those underlying zoning districts, because this is applying strictly to the sub-districts.
So, if you are, if you have a property, and you wanna figure out what your underlying zoning district is, you go to the zoning map and you find it out. you go to the zoning map and you find it out. This is not where you would go because you don't know where the North Wedge Pond area is anyway, so you would.
Well, you have to look at the map.
You'd look at the, you'd look at the town zoning map and it would tell you that.
No, the town zoning map is gonna show the boundaries of the MOD sub-districts in the town zoning map?
Yes.
Yep.
It has to.
Good luck with that graphic.
It's the same with all of the other overlays.
Well, we don't show the north core. No, we don't have the cores of the CBD shown on the town zoning map.
Because those are sub-districts.
Right. These sub-districts will also not be on the town zoning map.
The point is that.
Well, they're gonna have to be because we say they're.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, they're very. How are you gonna do it?
You can do an inset. You can do it, it does not.
We can, the, the point is the official indication of which zone your property lies in is the zoning map. So everything has to be available from that as the source. The underlying zoning district doesn't provide any information which is pertinent to this by law.
There was a question from someone that said, I don't know. Nowhere do you see how to tell what your underlying zoning district is, but I don't, I guess we would just tell them.
You just go to the.
The map.
You do it for like any other property in town. You go to the zoning map. So I would straight.
Right, here it is. It's on the previous page and it was EI, oh, I, whoever that is. It is not clear within the zoning which dimensional standard applies to which sub-district because the zoning districts for North Main Street, North Wedge Pond and Parkview are not identified, meaning the sub-district.
That's been resolved. It's been resolved. That comment is faded, which means it's been resolved. So that's what I believe the introduction of this whole chart indicates. So we take out the underlying zoning districts. Now we're going to move through here and we're going to see, so we do have some questions here.
Why does the word lots appear? We made categories. I see, we made lots, heights, setbacks and areas which would be centered also.
Okay, so are we gonna deal with the names right now?
Uh, no. Can we, can we please deal with the numbers?
Okay.
Let's, so, so we have questions about this which regards to some of the contents, namely, there's a question about FAR from you, Eiching, I think.
Yeah.
I don't know who it was.
I think it was Eiching.
Um, I think they're in the end, are the ones in the end.
I'd still like to know if our FAR.
Well, let's go through there. I can't read the comments on this slide.
I'd like to know if our FAR includes covered parking.
Okay, so does the FAR include covered parking?
Do you know if it does?
Do you?
We, we do not define it.
Excuse me?
We do not define that.
So the reason why I'd like to know is because, uh, I, I would like to drive developers to do covered parking and we've, um, to, to disincent, disincentivize them from doing surface parking. The surface parking seems to be the biggest waste of land. However, if somebody puts covered parking in, um, that then takes away from the FAR, if it is not subtracted and they therefore have less volumetric space to house people.
Right, so the question to Jay, Jay, in, so this, this is a separate conversation going on.
Okay.
So this, we don't have floor area ratio, but in order to get a ratio, you need to know what the floor area is and this is our definition of floor area.
Exclusive of garages, cellar and attic.
Oh, interesting. So, you know, in the example on Main Street where that, that development happened and somebody, um, put a covering over the, the car and then the neighbors were saying that should be considered part building, right? I mean, that, that, they, they use the top to use, I don't know, porch space.
It looks like porches.
So it's, it's a use of, um, vertical space, which I would, I would want to try to encourage. But if, if it isn't, if it is counted as FAR and they somehow, I, I, I'm just trying to figure out whether or not this actually, not defining it disincentivizes them.
So this one, I think, is designed, if you look at exclusive of garages, cellar and attic areas used only for storage. So they're thinking of floor area as habitable space. So the question.
Including hallways and laundry rooms and things like that.
Yeah, so, but, but, so if we wanted to, if you wanted to include the garages underground or, what is the word for that?
Covered.
Covered garages where it's covered by the main structure, which would be specific because a covered garage could also be a garage that's not connected to your structure. Then that would induce people to, that would get you to your FAR much more quickly.
Yeah.
So, and what is it that you wish them to do? You want to incentivize them putting it underneath?
Yeah.
Then I would say that it doesn't count towards your FAR.
Then it should not count towards the FAR.
All right, and that's what this does in this definition.
But it doesn't get to the.
Doesn't.
It doesn't?
So it excludes.
It excludes it, which means that.
That's what we wanna do. We wanna exclude covered parking, right?
If you exclude the parking, that means they can put it underneath the building and not change the floor area ratio.
Yeah, correct.
And that's what you want.
Yes.
The neighbors of that particular structure would much prefer that we put garages in floor area ratio because they dislike the, the massing and the volume of the structure. So we have two opposite.
You're saying the neighbors would.
Well, so what happened with, you're talking about the building with the three giant porches off the back of the building?
Yeah, yeah, because if you, if you.
Those porches are, are floor area ratio.
And so is the garage, but the garage underneath it isn't, so it doesn't count.
Right, but it's three stories of area, area, area that does count.
But the area underneath them, which is garage, does not count.
Yes, and you're saying the neighbors were upset that the area under the porches that was for, is for garages was not counted for the FAR?
Yes, because if you included the garages, then the building would have had to have been smaller.
Right, and.
So, so there's, the neighbors don't like the mass of the building, but if you want to incentivize putting parking underneath, then you would do what it is here. So we have oppos, so the other incentive might be that you make the building taller, but that's actually, this is the same thing effectively.
I mean, there would be a cap in floor height to it, right? So if the first floor is taken up by the garage, then, and it's a three-story building, you can only do two stories of habitable space anyway.
Unless.
You might, you might not even reach your FAR because.
Well, yeah, but you can, like, for instance, that building in question has first floor commercial, which you could imagine if it was multifamily by right would actually be a residence on the first floor.
Mm-hmm.
So, so I, I, I think we have two conflicting things going on here and it's up to the board to set what policy it wants in the overlay district. Do we want to encourage putting garages underneath? If so, then we leave it as is.
As opposed to, oh, Carrie.
To something, so we go back to our unit count, right? I mean, if we, like, I, I feel a little lost for where we are with whether or not we're hitting our units and how small we can let buildings get before we start to violate that.
If we start adding garages to FARs, then we have to redo our models.
Also, um, because some of the units have to be, um, able to be accepted into subsidized housing inventory, the Commonwealth has very strict guidelines, very strict standards for what an affordable dwelling can be, including, I think, a minimum square footage.
So if you wanna change that to make this building small, you would have to change this and go town meeting and ask them to change that definition then.
I don't, I mean, so I think we're, we're, we're heading in a direction where we don't have, we can, we have to set a clear policy for what we want in the MOD and, and I think that if we decide to, to put garages into the FAR, then we have problems with our models. If we decide to keep them out, then we are sort of saying, put them underneath, we like it. We have other incentives in the CBD which gives you a height bump if you put it underneath the building. So it's not, this isn't new to our zoning in terms of trying to get people to put things underneath. When we're talking about, yeah, so I know that some members of the Z-RAC were very concerned about including, not, about the fact that we don't include garages in the FAR. And so this is where I think we can't satisfy everyone.
Does the Commonwealth care?
Does the Commonwealth care?
Yes.
No.
Because there is an impact on, on, well, what you said, we have to redo our model. It, it has an impact on, on the number or the squ, just the amount of housing that you can create.
As long as we come up with the number of units and the density, they don't care if we have it underneath or not. If we put it in as part of the FAR, then we have to bump up the height. I mean, it's on us to, if we tweak the FAR knob with garages, then we have to tweak another knob. Commonwealth really doesn't care because it's, so.
So, but Carrie made the point that, um, she wanted to make sure we continue to be focused on number of units, dwelling units. And one thing I've always maintained about floor area ratio is that, um, it doesn't care if it's one giant unit of 5,000 square feet or if it's, you know, five, $1,000.
Well, I thought the calculation was around 1,000 square foot, a, a unit.
So the rule of thumb?
Yes.
But we can't, we can't really.
I don't remember.
We, we can't direct a developer to put in certain size units. We can only say, this is how much volume you can take up.
How do they get to density based on volume? 1,000?
Yes, I thought that was what Emily had said.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I see what, I'm, yes, but we, we, we use this, but if the developer goes in and decides to put in a 5,000 square foot thing, that's up to them. We can't.
Yeah, it's the market, whatever.
Yeah, I mean, it's, so. So we come back to floor area ratio.
Yeah.
What do we wanna do with it?
I'm inclined to leave it so we don't need to run the models.
I'm inclined to leave that definition.
I'm inclined to leave it to, on the basis of you can produce more housing.
Okay.
Produce more housing, that's what I was trying to say.
So, so let's move, so FAR, I think these are all the numbers that we, we talked about, some of these, I'm pretty sure, when we spoke with Michael a couple of weeks ago. Are we okay with these FARs?
So Parkview has a much higher FAR because it's, the Parkview maximum height is much higher.
It is what it is. It is what is existing right now.
Yeah, so in this, in this table, Parkview's gonna be a little, it's gonna be a little confusing and we should talk about it. So there's a mix of what is currently existing and what it's zoned for. So, for example.
Taylor, will you scroll so that people can see it?
Oh, I'm sorry. So, for example, Parkview right now is zoned for a floor area ratio of two, but the building that is on it is, we, we actually don't know what, what the building, what the building is on it for, for an FAR. I mean, we could do the math.
But the taller the building, the higher the FAR.
Well, it could be wide, too.
Well, that's true because if you have a very big lot, right.
So, so whatever we put in under Parkview has to be as built because that's what we're using in our models.
Right, so everything else here except for floor area ratio, um, and the areas are based off of the existing building.
So, so the FAR is, we'll have to figure out what it is and we can probably do that based on.
Well.
We can use GIS to get a floor area for the building and then we'll just count, then we'll just assume it's, go straight up. We extrude it upwards, count the number of floors and call it a day.
Yeah, except that it's a curved building, so you have to have good math skills.
No, we, GIS can give you that.
Oh, I see, good.
So we'll just calculate it.
So my only question was whether 2.0 in Parkview is sufficient.
And the answer is, it'll be whatever it turns out to be. When it's calculated, that number will go in. Because we don't know what it is.
You mean our, you mean when we do our final compliance calculations, you're going to go back to this table and possibly adjust Parkview 2.0? Is that what you're saying?
Parkview is already, whatever, whatever is in our models uses whatever Parkview has now. I don't know what, what, what's in our models.
Right.
I don't know what the, what the knobs are.
Right.
All I know is the model was based upon the existing, and it was, it was, it was done by special permit, so am I correct, Jane, if, if something is allowed by special permit, that the next person come in and use that special permit? Or does it go back to the underlying zoning? If, let's say Parkview gets taken out by a tornado. Do you go, do you use the special permit to rebuild or do you, can you, do you have to go back to the underlying zoning?
Have to look at the, well, in the event of, if something's reconstructed after a casualty, so I'd have to look at the zoning bylaws.
But let's say not, I mean.
If you don't allow special permits for it anymore, it would be a pre-existing non-conforming use which you can, I'd have to, again, look at the bylaw, but probably could reconstruct it as it was.
But, in, in any case, the, the MOD will set the dimensions for whatever the overlay will use. So in a sense, it doesn't matter what the underlying was just so that we get the numbers right, so we get our densities.
Right, the fact that someone may use it, I mean, versus tearing it down and building something new.
Yeah, I'm just, yeah.
So on that Parkview lot, which is an eight acre piece of land, right, um, you have setbacks, so you subtract that and then you have the buildable area and if you do 2.0, that's twice the remaining.
Where is that calculation set, set up?
Well, that's what the definition of floor area.
No, it's not, it's not including setbacks. It's, it's the area of the lot.
It's the area of the lot.
Right, but if you're saying.
But if you're gonna build, then you build off the setback, but the allowable FAR is still calculated by the entire lot, not the setbacks.
Okay, so if you have a 6,500 square foot lot and a 2.0 FAR, you could build a building that's got an area of 11.
120,000 square feet, right?
150, 1300.
No, 6,500.
6,500, okay.
Yes.
13,000.
It was like.
I was, okay, so we can't, okay. I'm getting confused. We should put a definition of FAR somewhere.
Well, we could put it right into the back of.
It's in, it's in section 10.
No, floor area is in section 10. Floor area ratio is something that's defined by the building industry.
Add a footnote to the table.
Well, yeah, because right here, notice the floor area here talks about the area of the building and then the ratio has to talk about the.
Drop a footnote to the table, says floor area ratio is the total floor area as defined by section, in section 10.
Divided by.
Yeah.
But divided by the area of the lot.
By the area of the lot. Okay. Not the buildable area of the lot, the area.
The floral area.
Okay, so let's put that in. Footnote this table.
And a higher FAR allows more, oh, floor area.
Was a bigger volume for your building.
Yeah.
Not volume because you could have really high ceilings, but it allows more usable floor space.
Yes, Jay.
Okay. My brain doesn't process that quickly, so.
Well, so.
So let's, let's, are we done with FAR?
We're gonna leave it at 1.5, 1.0, 2.0 and 2.0.
We're gonna, no, that last number will be whatever we calculate.
Oh, it's gonna be driven by our compliance.
The existing design.
Okay, when are you gonna have that number? Is it Friday, your deadline?
Yeah, Dea made it sound like it's a really easy calculation, which it's not, but I will work to make sure that.
We haven't had a recalculation of our compliance model.
And no, it doesn't matter. That, that, that number doesn't matter for the number of units. We counted the number of units and then put it into the acreage and that was, that's in the compliance model. Yeah, but we just need to get the right FAR going on here.
So I'm not, yeah, so I don't know, I think 2.0 might be kind of low, but I don't know.
That's what I think, too, for an eight-story building.
Okay, but like, it's gonna get late.
Yeah, so that's why.
I think that's the calculation we need to figure out and.
If we, if we can't do the calculation, we'll have to leave it like it is. And then we'll have to amend it by the time we get to town meeting and just say, this is an amendment, we had to calculate it, we didn't have time. So let's move on to max height.
And hope, and hope we don't have a two-day conversation.
Let's hope we don't.
So the 2.0 may be.
Revised.
Revised, um, by amendment at the, at town meeting.
So let's, because it's.
We're gonna try to do this math by Friday.
So max height, 45 feet, 45 feet, 40 and 64.
What?
Yeah.
Good.
Reading the row on heights. Are we okay with that?
The only issue that I have here is that, you know, for Main Street, we had talked about changing the height of the W2 in, in my, my, I, um, in my mind of part of the mod here to, from 45.
But W2's not part of.
So that is 40, that is 40, okay.
I'm sorry, W2's not part of the mod.
Yes.
It is, it is part of the mod.
So, but it's at 45.
Okay, up there it says 40.
A little bit of W2, right, just a quick, W1.
It does say 45.
No, it does say 45.
So I'm just, I'm just worried about when you guys have to bring Main Street up to, um, well, A, the argument that you're making to town meeting that the underlying zoning has not changed.
I don't have.
No, I think we can no longer make that because we've introduced GBD2 to this.
We've introduced what?
We've introduced GBD2. The argument made to town meeting was, I don't know what's, I'd have to look right now and see what GBD2's max is. I think it's 45, though.
I think it's 45.
I thought we only modeled to the half mile.
No, we modeled everything.
Okay.
Because otherwise we wouldn't get their whole.
So when you say that the second sub-district is labeled GBD2.
That includes all of GBD2.
It all includes all of GBD2.
Or most of it, or something.
Okay, so right now it's at, I think it's at 45, right? It's the maximum.
What, what you see in the tables here is exactly what's allowed today.
And then, so hold on, um, but when, when we talked about this, we talked about modulating W2 to become lower and so you're gonna come up with that whole like, how do you, how do you write this when the mod is at 45 and then the Main Street's gonna be at 40? So it's a, it's an argument of also, um, three-story. So it's a, it's an argument of also three-story versus two-and-a-half stories, right? You kind of wanted to make that diminished a little bit. So it's gonna get tricky for you, is all I'm trying to say.
Well, that's, I mean, and there was a comment in here which says to pull GBD2 out and replace it with E1, E2, W1, W...
We can't, they're not introduced until, until the fall.
Yeah, and I, we talked about this with Taylor, and I did, and it just gets confusing.
We can change it later.
You can change it later without changing the EOHLC sort of...
We can come back and modify this as long as we're compliant.
Yeah, no, you're not locked in.
All right, then that would be simpler.
You're locked into the boundaries, but not.
Simpler to say forty-five, then.
We can change anything we want.
You can change the boundaries, you can change anything, change anything you want.
It's just a question of how much political capital you want to spend.
Yeah, don't, I don't think we should spend it on five feet.
You can change it, but you submit it for approval. It's not like you can just change it and let it go on.
So, so forty-five, are we, are we okay with the heights? Are we okay with the stories?
Yeah.
Okay.
But we had said that on the land that backs up the stories here...
Right, correct, that's what I was just mentioning. There's, it's gonna get tricky later for them, but they'll, they'll deal with it.
But why don't we want that additional capacity now? And if we could find a way of differentiating that, we could say that was the 55 feet.
Because then you would have to divide GBD2 into three sections now, and that, or two, at least two, and then...
Well, it would be more if you want to differentiate the way we did.
I think, I think your clock is, is not gonna be...
We don't have time for that.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll leave it at six, fi, what are we leaving, GBD2 or 2.5?
We can introduce nuance of that sort later if it's deemed. So, we've got setbacks, the big setback, I think, is that we've got 70 feet for Parkview. It is what it is, I mean, it does create, it does make a lot of land not developable, so...
Sorry, before we move forward, the, for, for heights, because we didn't talk about this, the heights.
Yes, thank you.
CBD doesn't have a height limit, especially the North Core. Three stories is less than what we've modeled.
CBD has a height limit.
But we're mixing three different cores.
So what is the...
So we have Museum Core, we have North Core, and we have East Core. So we don't have one height limit.
What is the height limit we're using in the model?
Four stories with 45 feet.
So we have, in the Museum District...
Four stories with 45 feet?
Yeah.
Is what our CBD?
That's what the model says.
It's what our current model for MBTA compliance has.
Well, this is why I had asked that we quarterly...
That's what I'm looking for.
So we already have buildings in the, in the Museum District which are four stories.
Right.
Yeah, so why don't we...
Special permit in the North Core is also 65 feet.
Yeah, so, but we're, why don't we do it with whatever was in the model, which is 45 feet and four stories?
If we're gonna make 45 feet, four stories, we get into the math of the floor-to-floor ratio over those four stories, and very often, the first floor has a slightly higher floor-to-floor ratio than the second, third, and fourth floors.
If it's commercial.
That is true. If it's all residential, does 45 feet accommodate a four-story residential building? This is my question.
Existing, yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
We can, we can look at, so the, the building built on North Main where the Scruple Spa is, it's built within 45 feet, it's got four stories.
Okay, so you're gonna change this table?
And also, Sally, if a developer wants to come in and propose something that's taller, they can certainly do that through special permit.
Right, okay, so the town center column next to max stories will say four, not three, is that what you're saying? Okay.
Yes.
And then GBD2...
It was 45 and three stories.
Why?
Well, what is in the model?
Let's just, we have to conform to the model at this point, I mean.
I'm gonna have to double-check on that one, but that should be, I think it should be fine. Because what, because that's the existing zoning, right?
Well, I mean, to be consistent, we should either drop the 45 down to 40.
Or, or no, because 40 is a two-and-a-half.
Yeah, I mean, I think we have a consistency issue here.
This is exactly the point I was making when I made my note about this.
So, what's our resolution?
But it's just the max stories.
No, we have, we, we have GBD2, max building height as three stories, 45 feet, that's what we modeled after. There's no change.
And that's what's in the actual existing table?
Yes, that's what's in the existing table.
Okay, so we're not, that's the underlying zoning. The only thing we're doing is we're bumping the story up in the town, in the town center.
Right, because we have some examples of it.
We do have examples of it, and...
And we need the numbers.
We need the numbers. Okay, so, are we good on stories?
There is going to be, there is going to be a point of confusion at town meeting.
We will...
Forty-five is four, and forty-five is three?
But it's a maximum, right, so...
Yes, it will be a point of confusion, we will have to deal with it, yeah.
Okay.
We will note it. Okay, minimum front setbacks, the only number that screams is the 70 feet for Parkview.
Wait, we're still doing height, are we okay with the height and the maximum stories in North Wedge Pond and Parkview?
They're just existing, right?
That's what's there, right?
Okay, fine, now we can, I'm sorry, I just...
Yeah.
Setbacks.
Setbacks, the only one I think that screams out to me is the 70 feet.
Well, that's because all the parking's in front of the, or the...
No, they're not supposed to put parking in a setback.
Well, Parkview, that's just, is that just existing? Why is that, so it's just, it is what it is.
In, in the permit, or whatever it was that Parkview built under, that you saw, you were looking at today, nineteen sixty-something, did it have a minimum front setback to it?
No, we couldn't find any evidence of what the, what it was zoned for when it was built. What we found was what the existing building is, in its 70 feet.
Well, it was done by special permit, so...
So I would like to say, what, you always talk about with 3A zoning, just imagine that there's nothing on the land, right? Which is impossible with Parkview, but we can do this intellectual exercise. If there was nothing on that land, would we want the building a certain distance from the setback? But this is the front setback, would we want it 70 feet back? Or would we like more of a street scape along Swanton Street? And would we like to have all that parking, and a big ocean of parking? Or would we like smaller buildings with the different kind of structure?
They can't put, if they were, if, if Parkview were just...
Gone, just for whatever.
Brownfield, or whatever, you couldn't put the parking in front anyway, because it's against our...
Right.
You can't put it in a setback, so there would be no parking in front of it. So your 70 feet would be from the building to the street.
So do we want to have it 20 feet?
Yeah, I think it might be, makes sense to have it to 20 feet, because otherwise, well, you'll have this, I mean, it would maybe look better, because it's a huge building way in the back, but they would have to put the parking somewhere now, so where would they put it?
But I do just want to bring up what Yicheng started this conversation with, about if, when we're at town meeting and we're explaining, this is all existing, except for the front setback.
Yeah.
That's now different.
This is existing, we will assume it will never change, because I think the more we say, we will assume this will never change, is...
Right, likelihood of change is close to zero.
Okay.
But also, this prohibits it from ever changing, right? So should the condo...
Whereas the others are just kind of, you know, typical setbacks.
Yeah.
Seventy feet prohibits that site from ever changing, it just seems kind of odd.
I would, I would favor what DF suggested, which was to change it to 20.
And, and, and I just want to make, make it clear, that's great. We just need to make sure that when we're, when we're talking about this, we need to be aware of the fact that we're talking about no, not changing, but changing some.
We will...
So we just need to make sure that we...
We're talking about...
Yeah, we're talking about leaving everything.
And to the extent that people say if you do 20, there's gonna be a megalopolis there, you say, no, we've got a floor area ratio of 2.0.
And...
Yeah, if we're gonna rethink the 70, we kind of have to rethink the Parkview lot, and...
Well, I mean, anything that comes next, unless they re-renovate, can't have parking up front, so the parking has to go somewhere. Even though the parking requirement is reduced...
No, I know what you're saying, I'm just saying, if we just sort of, like, presenting it to town meeting, assuming the Parkview is gonna be in place for several incarnations of town.
And then leave it at 70?
We'll just leave it at 70?
Or we, yeah, I kind of feel like it's there.
And then you can make the statement.
People will equally either say, why would we change that one number, or why is that one number so weird? Like, we will end up explaining it, but it seems like an easier explanation to say, this is the Parkview as it's written, because we got to include it as it lives.
Okay, I mean, that's a...
Otherwise, we have to rethink the lot and think, what do we want for setbacks? It's a unique parcel.
It works, okay, so we're good with minimum front back? Front setback, we should combine it. Minimum side setbacks? I think we're good, I don't know.
You mean bordering, not boarding.
Yeah, bordering, so we have a typo there. Okay, so are we good with this side setbacks? Rear setbacks?
Carrie had a question.
I, I just asked one question, like, is there a fire standard? Like, historic buildings arguably being less flame retardant?
This is what's in the existing, so...
Can you capitalize, or use the same, make sure you use the same exact term for historic structure? That, that we use, right? Because it's only those ones that are showing on the map, right?
So, yeah, it's, okay, there is inconsistency there, I will, I will go back and change.
Just make sure the language...
I'm sorry, what's the inconsistency?
Just capitalize historic structure.
Just so it...
Or whatever you use.
Historically significant.
So it's, so it matches.
Right.
So historically significant.
Someone doesn't say, well, that one's...
Right, this one's historical.
Okay. So let's move on to rear setback, any problems with rear setback? Now we're going on to minimum adjacent to SCI and residential.
Minimum adj, minimum rear setback?
Minimum adjacent, any setback. If you're next to a, if you're either side, or a rear setback next to SCI or residential. So I have a problem with the one in town center being zero.
If that's existing, how are you gonna change that? Now? It, it seems like a different conversation, a different town meeting.
Yeah, you're right, I just, you know, I'm still thinking about Vine Street, where there is a zero setback next to the residential property.
Yeah, it's not the time to change it.
Okay, so we'll keep it as is. Now we go to the areas, this is open area.
Minimum open area.
And so these are existing ones?
Except for Parkview, so we'll have to, also have to do more calculations for Parkview.
Okay, so Parkview we have to calculate for all three of them?
Yep.
Okay, so these are all calculated, we'll figure something out. I think, you know, it doesn't have to be precise to the third decimal place, but it shouldn't be, you know, should be...
We should be accurate, rounded by...
So just to be clear, we're like locking Parkview from not developing at all, from any, in any way? I mean, no possibilities of it changing?
If we leave it at this, yeah. I mean, Parkview's weird, right? We only include it because we need the area, so...
Yeah, but it could be such a better use of space.
Yes, but...
So we're leaving Parkview, minimum open area, at, at whatever is...
Those numbers will change.
Right, it will change, because you're gonna do an area calculation based on GIS. Okay, so this is to be calculated based on what's there now, okay? And the North Wedge Pond number is also, is that the case?
No, North Wedge Pond is RA, RA 120.
And that 70% number comes from the underlying zoning?
Yeah.
Okay.
But, so, North Wedge Pond is a special permit, so it is denser than the underlying zoning, so I can't imagine it's still 70% open area.
In the, in the...
As built.
In section three?
As built.
Oh, as built.
I mean, what, the problem with North Wedge Pond and Parkview are they're both special permits. So the underlying zoning has already, doesn't...
So everything's grandfathered there already?
Yeah.
Which means they would need a variance here.
So we have to go to the underlying zoning? Regardless of whether the things that are built there...
No, we can, we can do whatever we want here.
Um, Taylor, what?
We won't comply with the underlying zoning.
I see.
So we can put whatever we want here, we should put in...
You need a lower number than for, than 70%.
Yeah, because I think we need to...
And, and it's, it's, it's actually 75.
In, in, as of right, or in, in reality?
No, that's not a calculated...
Right, that's, that's, underlying zoning, it's 75.
We need to, we need to calculate the as-built areas. Because that's what we're using in our models, is we're using the density based on the existing density.
The as-built density or the allowable?
As-built, because it's allowable, one of these is RG, so the density is really tiny.
This is the minimum open area.
So...
There it is, okay, so I have to look at the headers, but, oh, there it is, so...
I mean, part of the North Wedge Pond, I mean, they're in two separate underlying zoning areas.
This is why I put the underlying zoning...
But it doesn't matter to what we're doing. Because we don't care about that, except that we just need to get the numbers correct, so that we get our units right, our, our units and our density right.
So RA is Park, no, RA 120 is North Wedge Pond. So you go across the top, the third column over is RDA.
So that's, so it's not, because half of it is RG. That's why, what we need to...
And if I read over on those two columns, one says 75, and one says 70, wow.
But it doesn't matter, because that's not what's built.
Right.
So we just have to look at what's on the ground and put those numbers in here.
I think that is correct.
So, okay.
Taylor, you have, oh, yes.
I've got these notes down, so let's move on to parking minimums.
Okay, so this is changing, so you'll have to explain at town meeting, this is changing.
Changing from the underlying.
Yeah.
So for the...
Because we modeled based on what's built there, and what's built there doesn't comply.
No, no, it changed it.
This is what we agreed on at our last meeting?
Well, the .75 for the CBD is the existing zoning, I believe. We matched the existing zoning on GBD2 with points...
You mean point two?
No, .75.
Are we talking about which column?
We're talking about...
I mean, which row?
There's only one row, it's for...
No, we are at parking now.
Moved on to parking.
We're parking.
Oh, I did not know that we had moved to the parking table, sorry, guys.
We had moved to the parking, so the, the town center one is, is consistent with what we have in the town center. GBD2, we, we, we chose, because we wanted to move the development similar to what's in the North Core, up to the GBD2, to that lower area, we moved to .75.
From two...
I, I don't know what's...
From two.
From two. And the other two units are at one, so this is for, wherever the heck those two are.
Yeah, the, the headers.
North Wedge Pond and Parkview are both at one.
Is that existing, is that what is built?
Parkview probably has a lot more than that.
Yeah, Parkview, I, I don't, I mean, maybe we can look through some of the older documents and find out how many. I'm sure parking spots have been added and removed since then, but we can look back to the documents from 65.
These are minimums, so as long as they have at least one, they're hitting minimums.
Parking minimums, right.
And does this alter our capacity in our...
It'll actually increase it a little bit.
It increases our capacity, because we lowered it.
Yes.
From two to one, two, two to .75.
Correct.
Right, right. So that's, that's the major one, is the GBD2 change, is what we need to, we need to explain.
I'm confused by your use of the word capacity in that question.
When you lower the minimum parking requirements, you increase the amount of space that you can allow for more units, so...
Right, capacity for housing.
Capacity for housing.
Okay, that's what I'm...
Or open space or whatever.
Right. Okay. Yes.
So it helps our numbers to reduce the parking.
Okay, so we're leaving it, the first two columns are .75 and the second two columns are one.
At this point, those are what's in the models.
Right.
So.
State allows it, can-
Just make, have town meeting do this.
Can we, we only have 15 more minutes. Can we talk about the affordability requirements while we still have some time to discuss it?
That's actually number three and we are right there. So we have, so the existing affordability requirements in the CBD and the GBDs is that six units or more, you have to put in 10% at 80% AMI. And I think it's 25 units, you have to put in an extra 5% at 120% AMI. So the state allows you to put in 10%, and I don't know that they say whether it's 80 or 120% AMI.
They say it's 80.
The state says 80?
10%, and they say that, they say that it applies to buildings with 10 or more dwelling units because they wanted to deal with whole numbers and if we didn't, they rounded down and we round up.
Right, so we had, in order to go more than 10%, we have to have an economic feasibility analysis to see whether we can do so.
You have that.
We have that. They ran a number of models, none of which is exactly what we have in the CBD. However, they ran a model showing that 80% AMI up to 25 plus units was economically feasible, as was 120. So, AMI. So, in other words, what we want to do, if we wish to duplicate what's in the CBD, is it's in between those two models. So I feel confident they will be able to explain to town meeting that if we want to take the CBD numbers, that we will be able to explain to them and say, we've got a conservative model and we have a more liberal model in terms of how much money for the developers and our preferred setup goes in between. So these two, so even though we don't have an exact analysis for our condition, it's bracketed, so we're good.
Yeah, I'm confused. Which variable are you saying is in between?
So in the CBD, 10% is at 80% AMI and the higher number, 5%, is at 120% AMI. So we have a model, we have a setup in the CBD where we have two levels of AMIs. The models run by the consultants only had one level. It was either 80% or 120, but not both. But if it's economically feasible at 80%, then we can easily say, and it's feasible at 120, then our model falls in between and it works. It's just straight numbers. So currently in this bylaw, we don't actually speak about minimums. We speak about what might-ifs. So for instance, there's nothing in here which says you must have 10% for X units or higher.
Well, so 81174, in applicable projects, not fewer than 10% of housing units constructed shall be affordable. So if we said, if someone only constructed three housing units, that would be zero.
You're rounding down.
Yep, and it's zero. If somebody were constructing five housing units, it would be zero. If somebody were constructing six housing units, it would be one, right? Oh, no, they round down.
Right.
But you don't round down from six, do you?
Yes, they do. They just-
You round down until you get to 10.
Oh, everything under 9.9 rounds down to?
Yep. But, but what 81174 doesn't say is what the affordability limit is.
Okay. I thought it was written and then now it's crossed out.
Yeah, it was the, it was, no, because it said it in the previous paragraph.
No, it didn't.
Isn't it the last-
Well, it used to.
Look up, doesn't it say it?
No, it doesn't say that.
It said it twice and that's why-
It says that all units affordable to households must, at 80% must be eligible for listing on the SHI, but it doesn't say how many we need, it doesn't, it doesn't say anything about how that relates to our requirements for the number of units.
I see.
All it does is say, if you build them at 80%, they gotta be eligible. That's, so that doesn't say anything about our capacity. So I'm not sure why that last sentence in 81174 was crossed out.
I crossed it out because I thought that it was that precise, exact sentence in the previous paragraph, but I obviously am mistaken about that.
I would, I would-
So reject that-
All units affordable to households.
Reject that change.
Now, is that, does it exclude, are we excluding 120% if we say-
We haven't gotten there yet.
We haven't gotten to the 120 yet.
But it says it must be available to, okay, it must be available for up to 80%.
Earning 80% or less, yes, and up to, right.
But that means it's not available for 120%.
So, so the 10% we're asking is up to, yeah, we're saying the maximum AMI for the 10% is 80%. So you could build it at 30, you could build it at 50, but you can't, it's not workforce housing. It's SHI housing.
Shouldn't we have it at 120 to make it more available?
Then it's not, then it will not be eligible for us for, to be on the subsidized housing in the town.
Right, 80% is the subsidy.
So that's, that's why, so that's why in the CBD-
And that's a requirement of the 3A?
That's a requirement of the affordable housing.
The 3A, the 3A says you may have up to 10%. You don't have to have any, but it says you may have up to 10%. Having the 10% affordability, I believe, gets us into the simple majority for getting past town meeting. Correct me if I'm wrong, Jay. But at least it certainly puts more weight on that. So when we get to the workforce housing, this would be the additional bump, like what we do now in the CBD and the GBD2s and 3s.
And just to clarify, workforce housing means available to people who make one, households that make 120% of the area median.
Up to.
Up to.
Up to.
Right.
Up to, right, so that's called workforce housing if you make your household.
But it's going to be priced accordingly.
Yes, it will-
On that, depending on, so it'll be priced at 120, so people making less than that probably wouldn't qualify.
Correct.
But are you rounding up for the additional 5%? Because otherwise it wouldn't kick into 150 units, right?
So, so this is, this is where one of my comments, one of my comments somewhere shows-
No, so I think for the inclusion housing is six to 24. Our inclusionary housing is six to 24 units, you get 10% of, from 25 and up, you add the 15.
You add the five, additional five.
You add the 5%.
Yeah, and that's not clear, this language is very unclear.
Could you just refer-
Doesn't say that here.
Right.
It does not say that here.
To our inclusionary housing?
What?
Could you refer to our inclusionary housing from here?
Well, we had to, 81174 had to be written this way because you have to round down.
So not fewer than 10% of housing units constructed shall be affordable. And affordable means 80%.
Let's keep, yeah, I think we're fine.
Okay, for the purpose of calculating the number of units required within a development project, a fractional unit should be rounded down.
So, so the table on the right in really small type says, if you, the first column is the number of units, the second is how many you get at 10%, rounded down, and the third is if you are at 15%, the number of units. So the key here is that-
Wait, doesn't it make any sense? Do you have, at 10, so for our inclusionary housing right now, at 10 units, you are only demand, you are only-
Getting one.
Getting one, you're not doing any 15%. So why are you putting a one under 15?
Because you still get it under 15%.
I see.
So all, these two columns are independent.
But in total, under 15%, you get one.
In total, under 15%, you get one.
In total, under-
So ignore, ignore the numbers 10 and 15. It was a spreadsheet, so you fill in all the numbers. So ignore the, ignore the, look at the numbers for 10. You know, the key, so 10 is what we've got. We're going to do 10, we're going to get, you know, we start counting at 10 units and then we go up. So the question is where, if we want to put 15% in, where do we put 15% in? Because again, we got around, we don't have to round down because this is extra, but let's keep it the same. That's why we can't quite do it the same as the CBD is because it rounds up.
I wrote that text that's in blue there and my thinking was this. It says if you include at least 15% of your housing units are eligible for listing in DH, CD, SHI, okay? We may choose to waive, and I was very vague intentionally, we have to fix that, aspects of the development standards.
But that doesn't-
Or we should waive them.
Well, upon finding consistency, it's variation with the overall percentage.
But Sally, you said this is if you do more than 10%. So this is a separate issue.
No, I said, that include, I said, if you have 10 or more units-
Yes.
And you include at least 15% of the units are eligible for listing.
But that's separate from the, if we're trying to mimic what's in the CBD, then this doesn't, this is not what's in the CBD.
But I thought we weren't mimicking what was in the CBD because the CBD is rounding up instead of down. So you get more units, when you get to six, you get two, okay? And the CBD is also tying anything, once you get up to 15%, the last 5% is always two households at 120% AMI. That's what we do in the CBD and this is different than that.
Right, but the, the, the policies that underlie the reason for the workforce housing in the CBD were extended to the GBDs so that we have a uniform set of housing, inclusive housing standards. So if we were to put in a different set of standards apart from the rounding up or down for the MOD, it would be different from the other stuff all around. I think it's confusing to have very different standards.
So what would you do?
I would say that for housing over 25 units, that 15, that an extra 5% of the units would be at 120% AMI, which is what we have now.
Rounding up.
Rounding, we could round up or round down?
You'd have to round up.
Well, this, we don't have to.
25 would make two.
I think if we're talking about having a compelling argument for town meeting, what we have now, I think, makes sense.
So I agree. The only, the only question is rounding up or down. So we can, if we want to mimic the 5% at 120% AMI and round up, and then the 10% at 80% AMI round down, I think that's confusing. Because a developer is going to come in and they're going to say, we've already had this. So I think that in the MOD, we always round down, but we include the 5% jump when we get to 25 units. Because I think-
Okay, so that's different. This was a paragraph about an incentive to increase the percentage of affordable housing. What you're talking about is if somebody is building a building of a certain size, like 25 units, how many shall be-
Yes.
Eligible to be listed as affordable and at what levels?
Right, because this-
So this paragraph that says incentive, just take that out. Someone asked for what are we doing with incentives?
So we're not doing any, I mean, so I don't, one of the problems, that's not a problem, sorry, wrong word. One of the issues was incentives is that we, I think we have to be pretty specific about what incentives they are. So for instance-
Well, that's why I said may waive aspects of, that's as vague as it gets.
Because nobody's going to know, you know, a developer won't know what that means. So for instance, if you were to say, we will give you a bump in the FAR by X, by .5.
Well, that's what we did with, with the PUDs.
Yeah, so those would be the ones, but I don't think we're, we're at a level of sophistication in our, in addressing this problem right now. I think that we can add them in later if we feel that. But right now, I would just say, let's mimic as much as possible what's in the CBD.
And you pick up that unit at the 25th, not the 20th?
Well, the CBD goes at the 25th, but you're rounding up there. If we moved this to the 20th, we would pick it up earlier.
You'd pick it up at there.
20, but it's-
I mean, I'm not suggesting you do it, I'm just wondering, I just want to-
Yeah, no, that's, those numbers there show, yeah, you pick up the unit at 20.
We're trying to comply with the state law about transit-oriented development and we're trying to-
The state doesn't care about the extra.
No, they don't.
They like it, but they don't care about the-
No, we prove the economic feasibility of doing so.
Yes.
So therefore, we do want to have, we want to specify that the underlying affordable housing rules apply.
Yeah, I mean, the 10% keeps us just breaking even with the SHI because we're just adding 10%. So we don't, we don't lose, we don't go down.
Right.
The 5% gives us more, not that many more, but it gives us more. So as Jay pointed out, the only question is, do we kick it in at 20 because we're rounding down? Or do we kick it at 25, which matches the number in the CBD?
And if you do do it at 25 and you're rounding down-
You get three units.
25 rounded down is two is-
Point 1.5 times 25 rounded down gives you three, according to my spreadsheet.
Point 1.5.
Did you pick up a full extra unit at 20 units?
Yep.
I see, okay. And it stays then at 20, oh, oh, I see, okay, so 20.
So, yeah.
Sure.
So, but it's a, you know, I don't, you know, one of the questions I don't, is we would have to look at the economic feasibility analysis to see if 15% at 20 was evaluated versus at 25. And I can't remember right now.
Oh, yeah, that would change the feasibility.
So I would suggest to be safe at the moment, let's do it at 25. It means that, and again, we can revisit this. You know, the timeline is to get this past the state. It's, if in two years or one year, we decide that we need more incentives, then we can approach that.
So this whole question of at least 15% of units, right? That needs to go into the previous, the purple paragraph up there. And take out the whole incentive to increase percentage of affordable housing. It's not an incentive, it's just simply that if you have a building-
Mandatory, you're just-
Yeah, so just put in another-
Starting at the 25th unit.
Yeah, so we're just saying, you know, whatever they're called, buildings with 25 or more units are required to have an extra 5% of the units that are affordable at 100%, 180% AMI.
120%.
Thank you, 120%. The one thing that we have always had an issue with in the CBD is how you calculate when those units kick in. Do they kick in if you, if you have, in this case, you have nine units and you add another unit? Does that trigger the 10% because you're adding one unit? And all of a sudden you're at 10? So is it, so the question is, how, when does it get triggered?
And I thought I read, and I don't know where now, that it is not possible to just do these in little increments and get away with not having to do it. It's always based on how many units you're ending up with when you do whatever you're doing. So whatever's already there, plus if you build more.
So that's not the way this town has interpreted that bylaw.
I know.
So the question is, do we fix it here?
Just for MOD?
MOD? I would suggest that we, we, again, this is an issue that we would, I would think that if we want to fix it, we would have to fix it in all of the districts so it's consistent. And I don't think we have the bandwidth to do that at this moment. So I would just continue on. And I think, I think that's it for inclusionary housing.
And Taylor, the whole, it's the additional 5%. The first 15, this is in your sentence, so for developments with 25 or more units-
I would say, I would just start with developments, not-
Yeah, take out four. Must have no fewer than 15% affordable units, 10% of which are available to households earning 80% AMI.
I think it's just, I think the original one is just an additional 5% has to-
And that additional 5% is available to households earning 120, not 125, 120.
Yeah, rewrite that to say must have an additional five units, or 5% of units.
At 120, not 125.
Up to 120.
Up to, yeah, households earning up to 120% of area median income.
So then 81175, is that going to be a-
It's gone.
It's, it's completely gone.
Okay.
Some of the, some of the language around the affordable, the calculation that we have to be a little careful with because the developer is going to be able to price them. It's not that they're affordable to people earning up to 120% of AMI. It's that they're going to be sold at prices or available at rents or prices for those earning 120%.
Well, why don't we, why don't we see what we have in the existing language?
Because we can't have, if we say up to and someone comes in earnings 60%, we can't change the price for it. The prices are set at someone making 80% of AMI.
It's right.
Not that they're deemed affordable at persons earning up to.
Okay, so we have language in-
Can we follow that up tomorrow? Okay, can we move on?
We can fluff the language right on.
Yep.
Yeah, we'll fix, we can fix that.
Here's what I have a question about, the word constructed in the first sentence. If you have a building that has, you know, three units in it now and somebody builds- If you have a building that has, you know, three units in it now, and somebody builds five more units, that's eight. If they build six more units, that's nine. Now, that means that they don't need to have any affordable units, if it's not, if it's under ten.
And, and the question about whether serial addition of new units will trigger, we, we decided to table that discussion.
Okay, well, I saw it, read it, I thought I read it somewhere, that it's always based not on what you are building today, but what is ending up being.
Well, the key question is what's in our zoning, are we gonna be consistent with the rest of our zoning?
Okay, I see.
And if it's, if it's bad, then we have to fix it everywhere, and deal with it everywhere. So, let's get to, um-
Four, open space, open area, we did that.
We're still talking, we have underneath affordability requirements, we still have something-
We have development standards of affordable housing.
Development standards of affordable housing. I think these are, are these pretty much copied from the states?
Yeah, I think these, these can be removed.
Yeah, and these are all the standard things that-
Yeah, and it's actually what's, it's, it's the law, about affordable units.
Yeah, okay, so we're done with that. The next thing on our list of things was something with-
Eight-
Table one-dash-eight dot eleven. And Sally, you have a modification.
One-dash-eight dot eleven.
Who said there was a-
Permitted uses? Oh, I did say that. In the town center-
Can we just go back just for one second to the development standards? So, that's from the state, is that from the state only with respect to, is that their one-size-fits-all? Because it's not accurate for rental?
Yep, this, I believe that this is just copied directly, we'll, we'll check.
Did you just strike it out?
I did.
Why?
He's gonna put it back. Because rentals are all the same, because the, a market rate unit can become an affordable unit.
Yeah.
But, I mean, I, I'm fine going with what the state says, it's just-
Yeah, so right here.
I mean, it's okay, and even the dispersal thing changes with rental, but this is, it's fine, because it's at the time that people are applying, so it's okay.
Okay, so we're, we're good with A through G?
And what, G is in brackets, why?
Well, that's the origin, that's from the state, so who knows?
Occupancy permits may be issued for market rate units prior to the end of construction of the entire building.
All it means is that you're always gonna be making sure that one out of ten are gonna be-
Affordable, as you build along.
You don't, you don't jump ahead.
Right.
You do that in forty B parameters.
Yeah, okay, so, I don't know why it's in brackets, is my question.
Okay, one-eight-eleven. Sally, you're on duck.
Um, I know. I just had it, table one in section eight-eleven, where the heck it went?
It's permitted uses in sub-districts.
I know what it is, I just have to find it in this document.
Oh, I'm just telling everyone what it's called, so that they can-
Here, no.
It's the fourth page.
Thank you, Taylor. Yes, my comment in the margin was, oh, that wasn't my comment. I have to rewrite my comment in my mind, because it's not here. One of them was, oh, you made them all yeses there, okay. The only one that's a no is, in this whole table, is that we don't wanna have an apartment house in Parkview. Now, an apartment house, by definition, I have to go back to it, but-
I can tell you what it is. It's a multiple-family dwelling over three stories in height.
Okay.
I think we should allow, because-
I think, I think it, it has to be allowed, I don't know why.
Right, so that should be a yes. And then, what this is basically saying is that in all four of our MOD sub-districts, looking at the definitions of each of these four things, which is really important, that they're all allowed in all sub-districts.
Yep.
By the definitions that are in section ten of our zoning bylaw.
Because they all have to, because the state says multifamily is three or more units per lot. So, a garden apartment house is a multifamily dwelling, not over three stories in height, containing not less than four dwelling units, so we have to allow that. That fits in with the three minimum. A townhouse, is it just?
Townhouse, they say that the definition is of four in a row, or three-
A row of not less than three, nor more than ten attached dwelling units contained in one building separated by common or party walls, so that has more than three or more, so that's good.
Yep, 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 yep.
Dwelling multifamily is, is that a new definition, or is that an existing?
So, the only thing here is dwelling, dwelling multifamily, it's actually dwelling multiple family.
In our definition section.
It says, "A residential building designed for or occupied by three or more families with the number of families in residence not exceeding the number of dwelling units provided," which, since we don't define what a family is-
I love that.
It's a, I think, I mean-
We're not, we're not changing it.
We're not changing, I think we're cool.
Right, I think we are. And garden apartment house is townhouse, not, uh, cluster development? No, it's just two stories?
It's two-story apartments, right?
It's, it's a silly thing, because it has nothing to do with gardens.
So, what we did, Sally, is we took all of our existing-
Not more than three stories.
Our existing multifamily uses, and made them-
Kind of like the rear windows.
By right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Everyone faces the garden.
All right.
There wasn't much of a garden. Well, no, there was a guy with a garden.
There was one, well-
I think at town meeting, it's going to be really important, I think at town meeting, it's going to be really important that we have up on the screen when we show this, the town definitions of those four types of housing.
So, the only suggestion that I made for definitions was the removal, and we, we can change it, but the removal of the multiple family, actually, this was Liz's, Liz's suggestion, in the addition of multifamily housing.
So, before we remove something-
But that, that would be consolidating them all, right?
That's correct.
So, let, I, I think the thought is, let's not go changing, right?
So, don't, don't change, but still use multifamily housing.
I don't know what string you're gonna pull if you take out that definition.
So-
Totally fine, I just-
All those other, all those four uses right now, I get what Liz is saying too, because they're all subsets, and it makes some sense, but at this town meeting, the less change we do, the better.
But would you still suggest adding this? Because we use multifamily housing in our language a lot.
I think we should.
So you would keep both, dwelling, comma, multifamily would stay?
So-
You, you could, you could, if you want, or you could, again, maybe by, a footnote somewhere, just, maybe at that, that table, under the use table, the, the uses in this table are referred to, are collectively referred to as multifamily housing.
No, no, a single apartment is not multifamily housing.
Oh, but the, the-
But that's not in our table, so, yeah.
So-
Might be a way to do it, if you are using the term multifamily housing, maybe that's a way to do it.
We do use it. And, and the reason you wanted to take out dwelling, comma, multiple family, is because we don't refer to it anywhere, is that what you're saying?
No, no, no.
Oh.
It is referred to in the use table, but you're using, you're talking about all four of those when you use, throw around the term multifamily housing elsewhere in the bylaw, so.
So, could we do something like this, Jay? Could we simply have a little subsection with definitions and say, "These definitions are only applicable to this section of the bylaw"?
Of course.
So, we could take all of these definitions and put them in a section seven-point, or sorry.
Eight-point-eleven-eleven?
Eight-point-eleven-point-eleven, and say, "These, these terms are used, are defined for use only in this bylaw," so you can't confuse it with anything else.
Eight-point-eleven-point-eleven?
Yeah, we'll just add a new section at the end.
And its definitions-
Rather, rather than adding them to the definitions under section ten, you're just adding them.
Yeah.
And just making a new section.
And, and I had made the argument that I thought it's very difficult to read our zoning bylaws and not find a definition that you're looking for in section ten, and, and only by using word search can you find the definition buried in some other section of the, of the bylaws.
The only thing I'd say, and I don't disagree with you, but if someone wants to do something under this bylaw, they're gonna be a student of it, is what I would probably say. I get your point entirely, that having different definitions elsewhere can be confusing, but anyone that is targeting this for specific use, these four little sub-districts, is going to be living in this world.
Okay, okay.
So, I don't, I don't think they'll-
And so, to DF's point, then, we would put our, the current definition of those four types-
No, 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 no.
No, no, no.
We would put in the, the definition of area median income, DHCD, which we'll call whatever it is, district, MBTA, all the ones that Taylor has put in some new definitions.
All the ones that are just unique.
Okay.
And so, that would be, and the, they would go in a section, say, "Definitions for use in this section only."
Okay, and which of those are we defining for use in this?
Scroll, if you go to your, to your paper here, Sally, and you go to physical page number two.
That's okay. Okay.
Do you see where it says area median income, DHCD, et cetera? Those would be the ones that would be added to a section specific to this bylaw. And that way, we don't have to worry about, if we put it in, my concern is if we put any of these at the end in section ten, that we will have used those words somewhere else in the bylaw, and all of a sudden, we will have-
I think that was Liz's point.
Yeah, so let's just-
Okay.
Keep this hermetically sealed. Okay, so, we've got, we are approaching-
But, in, in the definition of multifamily housing, uses include apartment, it doesn't include apartment. If it's a single apartment, it's not a multifamily house.
No, no, but it's apartment house.
Apart, we have apartment house, but the word apartment precedes the comma.
Yeah, in this definition, it actually has singular apartment.
Yeah, I agree with her, that's-
Yeah, so-
I think that in this definition, in this MOD section of the bylaw-
It just listed as apartment house.
We can, why don't we just-
We have both, and I'm saying, take out apartment in this one.
I think we can take out the entire last sentence, because according to the state, it's any building with three or more dwelling units.
Right, and by definition, apartment house has three or more?
We don't care. All we care about is that a multifamily has three or more. That's what the state says, so that's all we care about. When we get to the use table where it shows these other ones, they all meet that definition in the use table. So, in this section, when we use the term multifamily, we mean anything which has three or more, or is, units. And so, that's, so we would just, I'm not sure where the, where the extra sentence came in, I think it was trying to make it work with ours, but-
No, I had typed part of that sentence to say, "See section ten definitions for."
Yeah, we can just, the, the key is what the state wants, which is three or more units.
Okay, when, if we're gonna cross out the second sentence of this definition?
Yeah, we'll cross out the second sentence. Okay, so, now we get to the most contentious, I wanna say tendentious, but I don't think that's a word, tendentious, the naming of districts. And we all know that names are powerful things.
So, you saw my note, that if the name is already taken and mapped and has a boundary defined by law, we can't use that name duplicatively.
So, I think that, so, town center is, I mean, it's, it's, it's not named, I think it's evocative of, it implies the entire town center is in it, and so, I don't know, but it's sort of like, I don't know what else we call it.
Well, it's, if you look at the MOD map, okay, and you say, "Well, where are the MOD sub-districts?" Well, one's in the center of town, one's where GBD two is, one's north end of Wedge Pond, and one's where the Parkview is.
Yeah, let me get the map up.
This map? No, not that map, the other map.
He had, Taylor keeps flashing up a map that kind of has a nice outline of them.
So, I'm sorry, I, my brain just lost track of all of the things you said.
Okay, what I'm saying is that you could, if the MOD, so, each of these, the first one, the third column and the fourth column, which is to say what I'm calling town center, North Wedge Pond, and Parkview, okay, those are not zoning districts.
Oh, yeah, I agree, yeah.
Right? GBD two is an existing zoning district.
I agree.
If we're going to use GBD two in this document, we have to make sure that we agree that everything that's in the current GBD two is in the MOD sub-district.
I, I suggest we not use GBD two, I agree with you. I was just starting with the first one, which is town center, which I think implies that all of the town center is in the MOD, which it's not.
And what would you suggest?
I was going to say North Core, but then I, then it's, we're missing Museum.
Right, and North Core is also a specific area.
Oh, North Center.
How about station area?
Then I would picture the Commons being, like, I would picture the-
Oh, no, and that would be incorrect as well, because-
You'd picture the area.
Do you not like Center North or North Center?
No, no, Center North, North Center works, I, my, my mind blanked when you said that.
Because it is all north of the Rotary, right?
So, let's call it North Center.
No row.
North Center.
So, town center is now North Center.
And then, GBD two, you, I could, you could call it Lower North Main Street.
But it's not, because Main Street goes all the way south of, of town center.
Right, Lower Upper North.
But North Main Street, we think of as being north of the-
Right, and also, North Main Street is not called North.
What if it's like something between Swanton and Skilling, because that's what it is, right?
Can't we just call it MODS one, MODS two, MODS three?
I would be in favor of that kind of a thing, too.
So, the boundaries of North Center are gonna be anything from the road, everything purple, CBD is now North Center.
MOD one, MOD two, MOD three.
So now, what are we naming E one?
Yeah, well, now we're trying to figure out everything between Skilling and Swanton.
So, we want to, so, we're also gonna, but we can't forget about that, because then we're gonna go to North G.
We gotta, we gotta, we're gonna call them S one, S two, and S three.
Okay, but she's got, Carrie has, Carrie has an important point that has to do with fall town meeting and the naming of the North Main Street sub-districts.
Okay.
Okay, so, they're-
I just, I think we want some, I mean, we can just number them, like, that could end up being fine, but I don't think it's gonna be that endearing, or, you know, like, we're gonna name all of North Main in these little pockets.
Why are you calling it S?
Sub-districts.
Sub-districts. That's a little bit-
I just-
So, so, Carrie, I, I don't quite understand your-
I'm, I'm just thinking, I mean, I guess we could do subdivision one, and go all the way through the North Main zones as well, I'm just thinking, should we try to come up?
I think the North Main, East West works.
Yes, and we're not introducing it.
I don't disagree with that, but-
Until September, or November.
Yeah, I know, I'm just trying to make sure we come up with a cohesive idea.
That we can have some GBD two, GBD three, kind of also part of the ne-, the next generation, so you could say Main two, Main three, and then it'd be Main two, East one, Main two, East.
Or Main East, or Main, South Main, East, or Main-
I think we might be getting ahead of ourselves.
I liked the Lower Upper North, no, the Lower Upper Main Street.
So, so, the only time that you're really ever gonna be referring to this district as its sub-districts is when a permit has been pulled, or when someone's in front of you. When it's on the map, and when we're talking about it as an overlay, it's just MOD. We're rarely talking about the sub-districts, just like-
Although they're each are gonna have to be shown on the map.
Yeah.
Yes.
Right, and also, the developer could come in and say, "I want to build a, a multifamily apartment," or whatever he uses, "and I wanna put it in this precise sub-district of the MOD."
And it'll say, there'll be a map that says S one, S two, S three, or M one, and whatever.
I mean, we are, we have no, there is no underlying logic to how we name any of our zoning.
Oh, I, that's for sure.
Should we do it like-
So, whatever we do now is fine, and let's just make it simple, I mean, I can-
On East, Mod West?
No, it's not East and West, because it's, it's, it's all in the same, it's on both sides.
I think if we just, if we, if we number them, one, two, three, it doesn't-
Four.
Taylor, can you put up the map of the four?
I mean, it's-
Thank you, Jane.
It's, you know, I- I mean, it's, it's, you know, I can't for the life of me, I mean, RDA 120 does, I mean, something with 120, we have an RDA 15 or something, which is 15,000 or something.
Do we have to rename North Wedge Pond and Parkview?
No, we don't have to.
No, no.
Does everyone just kind of know what that is?
It's, it, yes.
Well, I don't know if people know what North Wedge Pond is, because I don't think people think of it. I think most people race down that street and don't even recognize their buildings to the right.
But they will very easily understand it when someone says, "Yeah, it's the north side of Wedge..."
People know where Wedge Pond is, yes.
They know where Wedge Pond is.
So North Wedge Pond is fine for that.
So...
North Center, if we want to go with North Center for town center, that's fine. I think we stumbled at GBD-2. That was our stumble.
What about what Yiching suggested? Call it Skilling Swanton.
Oh, I'm leaning more towards like Main 2 and then Main 3 as like...
But we only have one, we have one district in there, the MOD is one chunk of Main Street.
I understand that, but as, as you think about the underlying zoning for your Main Street stuff, you can still use Main 2 to, to recognize that that is what you're talking about, and it has, it evokes GBD-2.
Oh, I see.
You're going to start changing GBD, that idea, but the 2 should stay because then it, it's, it's the entire GBD-2.
Will people say, "Where's, where's Main 1?"
They will say...
That was my first question.
And, and as, as of fall, there will hopefully not be GBD-2 or 3.
Correct.
So let's not call it Main 2.
So you don't want it to be a 2?
So let's just call it Main, South Main, South North Main.
Because that's not right.
That's right.
There is a Main Street that goes all the way to Metford.
Main Street goes to Metford.
We're stuck on this one, GBD-2.
Yeah.
Why don't we just call it...
Core 1.
Ah, no. Half Mile.
High School adjacent.
Well, can, sorry, I, like, what is the opposition to numbers? Is it, is there some, like, emotional attachment to the name?
We don't want to call it GBD-2 because we're going away with the definition of GBD in November.
I think we are going to have to name the sub-districts for the North Main project, and so when we're in front of sort of fall town meeting, we're nuancing it this way, that way for the sub-districts, those should have names.
But, but isn't the naming so inconsequential? It's, it's just, they're, they're, they're just, they're just polygons on a map.
Well, you want to call it 14.7?
Argument, the argument was...
1, 2, 3, 4.
Was that three of them have almost geographical names, which gives you an idea of where they are, and so it's the GBD-2, which is...
But you're, no one's talking about this in normal...
I, I don't understand this.
We're going with MOD in a numerical system.
MOD 1, 2, 3, 4.
It gives us a little bit of feeling that we're...
That's what he was just about to move.
I was going to say, let's go with numbers, we don't have to put the S in them.
And we need the MOD in them.
Yeah.
I think we need the MOD, but in case, one of the things, if ever we need a different MOD, then that's why I would say MOD sub-district.
No, then it could be MFOD.
What?
Because this is MBTA overlay district, that could be a multifamily overlay district.
Yeah, I'm, I'm still...
No, the way that, when I was proofreading the whole bylaw, part of the, the bylaw opens up by saying, "This is what an MOD is, now we're going to talk about MOD 1, which is these four sub-districts aggregated." And because we might have another MOD, say we have an MOD at Benel, I just made that up, but...
Well, then we're going to have to add another letter to the MOD, that's, I mean...
It would be MOD 2, but the first few paragraphs of this MOD bylaw are about any MOD.
I, sure, but let's look at the sub-district naming. If we call them MOD 1, MOD 2, MOD 3, MOD 4, then we can no longer use the word MOD for another district.
We could do MOD 5, 6, 7, and 8.
As long as they're underneath the same MOD.
Just use a different overlay name.
We'll just call it a different...
We have, we have six overlays already, and we haven't had a problem coming up with new names.
We'll just come up with a new name, that's all. I mean, it's like, I don't care.
I, I really like MOD.
Okay, MOD 1, 2, 3, 4, we're done.
I think you should start from the center, 1, and then 2, 3, 4.
I agree.
So the town center would be MOD 1, the 15.04 acres, Wedge Pond, 9.02, would be MOD 2, and then the 14.77 acres would be MOD 3, and then the 9.01 acres of Parkview would be MOD 4.
Is it hyphenated?
No.
MOD?
Just MOD.
1, MOD.
And so I hate to ask you this...
That's where you put your foot down, right?
Well, you know, hyphens are easier, as long as it's not an underscore, because those are hard to type. Taylor, unfortunately, that means you're going to have to move some columns around in these tables, because I...
Oh, well, then let's number them so that he doesn't have to do...
Well, then you've got to make your choice up.
MOD 1, MOD 2, oh, I see, Wedge Pond I called 2.
Yep, so I don't care which way we do it, but John, John, uh...
South to north progression is nice.
John Serbeer has sent email about MBTA's rules for inclusion of housing, so I would like us to go, but I'm, I'm wondering if we could do this. We have a public hearing on Thursday. I'm wondering if we could make the final vote on this language Thursday night. That way...
What are the hours of the...
Well, the public hearing starts at 7:30 and we can end it whenever we want.
Would we vote before?
I would, I would like Nick to have a chance to vote, right?
Yes, yes. So we would have the public hearing first, which would, I mean, I, it's possible someone will come up with an idea that we should incorporate, that is the point of the public hearing in part.
Yes.
But I was, since we're at this late stage, we have a lot of edits that need to be made, I don't feel comfortable voting this in until I see a more finished state of the document.
Right, we not only have edits to be made, but maps to be presented to the planning board, because I've never saw that map before, and we need to know that every change we've made before it goes to Friday noon is council-approved, right?
Council will approve it after Friday, I don't think you're going to, we'll get feedback...
But it's going in the warrant, it has to be approved by council.
Yeah, but I think if, if council has issues, when does the warrant have to get printed?
Well, that's a question that, that you should discuss with, with Beth, it doesn't have to be printed quite yet, but she likes to have the articles as finished as possible.
Yeah, as finished as possible, if there's some egregious thing that needs to be cured, then I think it'll happen.
Yeah, I didn't know the "as possible" was in there.
But I, I mean, I don't think between Thursday and, Thursday night and Friday at noon, I do not think that town council will be weighing in.
Oh, no, I figured that we had to be done.
We're, we're close, I mean, some of this stuff is not, like, legal-specific, you know, and a lot of the, my input today was less legal and more just trying to help.
Yeah.
So, I mean, Liz did a lot of the legal stuff, and Taylor's done a lot of the compliance stuff and the model, and your other consultants, so ostensibly, we're probably down a page or two as well. I can get it, I can get a review for form done by Friday.
Well, that depends on when these edits...
I mean, we still need a historical map, we still need a couple things, I have to give Taylor the right wording for the affordability thing, which is, I can do in the morning, so...
So I think that we have agreed upon our policies, which I think is important, so everything else is just essentially how it's presented, what language, and we just have to make sure that the language follows our policy. So I, you know, so with the boards, I mean, we can do a straw vote, is everyone here okay with having our final vote on Thursday night?
So how does that work in a public hearing?
Close, we end the public hearing.
Well, we end the public hearing and then we have a session that is the planning board meeting, where we say, "We are now going to vote on these things."
Where it tells in here, or...
You just close the hearing and you can vote immediately after.
I'm sorry, what, Jay?
You just close the hearing, you're still in a, and you're, you're still in a meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I just have a problem with the word lots on the, the slide that's on the screen where it says 2-811 dimensional requirements in sub-districts of the MODs, and you've categorized the different dimensional categories, and I understand that that one's height and that one's setback, the word lots just doesn't make sense to me.
I think it's just a relic, isn't it?
Yep.
I mean, we could just take that line out.
You could just, it's gone.
It's, each of those, you have to put something over there, it's part of some category. It doesn't fit under...
Well, they're not categorized in any other dimensional table.
All I'm saying is that if you take out the word lots...
Okay, so we could put FAR on there.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, if you don't like lots, but we have to have something there, because everything else is in some sort of a category.
It's, it looks weird, it looks weird, Sally, because in the other ones, we have, we have strict, more strict, you know, this is how big are like frontage and lot size, but we've removed all that.
What about something like massive, that gives people some idea?
We're defining FAR below, so we don't...
I was saying that you didn't need to have the line that is above the line that reads for...
No, because the others have a title, so I suggest...
So what we can do is simply, our existing dimensional table does not have subtitles.
Correct.
So if we, if to, to, to make it uniform, we either take them all out, or we put in FAR.